Good evening. This is the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Wednesday, June 5th. It is 7:00 PM. The first case we have tonight is case number 24-4 for 960 to 962 Main Street. And at the request of the applicant, this was for a variance for a sign, at the request of the applicant, they're asking to withdraw without prejudice. Anything else to add on that?
Okay.
We have a letter from the applicant stating that. So, does somebody want to make a motion to allow case number 24-4 to be withdrawn without prejudice?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Drew. Any further discussion on that withdrawal? Okay. Voting on this will be, let's see, who was here for, you were here for it? Okay. So, it'll be the five, five regular members that are here right now. Okay. All those in favor of allowing the applicant to withdraw, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. Next case we have is a sign case, and that is for anchor signs, case number 24-10, 102 Providence Highway, that's the Walpole Mall for Chick-fil-A, variance under section 75C6 of the Walpole zoning bylaws to allow two additional wall signs on the northeast and southwest elevations of the building. One sign to measure 58.85 square feet and the other to measure 35 square feet. The application, the applicant is also requesting a variance under section 76B of the Walpole zoning bylaws to allow a red LED in three of the proposed wall signs. The lights will be shielded and steady lights with no flashing. So, is somebody from Chick-fil-A here that wants to explain?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jim Herney. I'm, live in Charleston, South Carolina. And I, we are the signage vendor for the New York City, all the way up through the northeast for Chick-fil-A. But, as I came in a little earlier, while I am from Charleston, South Carolina, I was originally born in Southern Hampshire. It's nice to come back. This weather is perfect. I went to college just down the road at Norton Mass, so I'm, very nice to come back and get a chance to present to the group. Yes, the Chick-fil-A, the standard Chick-fil-A package for this new location, just drove by it here a few minutes ago, we are requesting two additional, an exemption for two additional wall signs. And as you all know, as you drive through that great commercial development, there are a number of buildings that have several wall signs beyond two and in larger shape. That could be, a perfect example is Chili's. Chili's has four large wall signs there, including a wall so, wall sign logo. Aspen Donald's got three, that's an inline store, three large signs on all corners. Same with Five Guys, they've got three. Panda Express actually has four, because they have a logo, wall logo as well. And Taco Bell has three signs and three wall logos. So, we, we know if allowed, will fit in with what's currently there. Secondly, to talk a little bit about the signs, I always say that signage is such an interesting industry, because you see a lot of signs that are poorly done, they're cheap, they flash. That's not what we do. It's not what Chick-fil-A does. These signs are going to use GE LEDs. We're going to use trim cap faces with the vinyl covering to shield out that red, so that red will just come into the backside of the existing vinyl that's there. It doesn't flash. It'll do a lot to add to that color. It's a standard Chick-fil-A signage set for across the country. That's what they typically have. And it will help, again, with traffic that comes in and out of that area. And you can see in the drawings that are in front of you, there's a breakdown of how the sign is made, the materials that are inside of it. And again, I, I'd just say, the kindness of the board, the most important thing is not to come in and overdo signage that doesn't fit into the plaza. It's really our belief, and hopefully the board as well, that Chick-fil-A will simply be doing as others are in that plaza. It'll fit nicely, it'll be updated signage. So, that's our request. I'm happy to answer any questions, anything at all. And by the way, Chick-fil-A makes great sandwiches, from the south, we say that, so, I did not bring any samples, I should have, yes, but you'll enjoy it. It will be a, it'll be a welcome addition, I promise.
So, one question on the signs is, the signs that are being proposed for the Walpole site, are those standard at your other locations, the 60, 60-inch channel letters is pretty much the standard?
Yes. What's, what's interesting about Chick-fil-A, Chick-fil-A is a cost-saving entity. There are not 17 different sizes. You know, there is a 60-inch size that is their standard fit across the country. They don't go higher, they don't go lower unless required by variance, but, or required by the rules. That 60-inch is standard all the way across the board. And that, that picture, that, the wall face is standard as well. For them, I happened to just happen to pull a picture up. You can see, this is, happy to share, that's New York. It's standard anywhere they do it. And that's going to have LEDs on the back of it. But, the, the sign looks essentially, if I can show it, it looks a little bit this way, but it's not as bright as you would think. And that's in our manufacturing facility, but it is their standard.
Anybody have any other questions or comments, board members? Anybody from, oh, sorry.
No, I guess, I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we're faced with the challenge of our variance standard being very restrictive. And the circumstances under which we can grant variances must relate to soil conditions, shape or topography of the parcel, or the structure itself. And, I don't know if you can speak to that standard a little bit and help us sort of see how, what sort of hardship would result, for example, if you were only permitted the two that were allowed under the zoning as opposed to the four that you're requesting?
That's a great point. Chick-fil-A, when it opens in your area, will have a large presence. And you're going to have a lot of traffic moving in and out of that facility. The key, from a safety standpoint, and being a good part of the community, is we want to make sure that the signage is available, that it's easily seen on the backside of the building as you're coming down that highway, as you, so you can enter in, there's nobody trying to get over too late. That could create issues, because you've got intersections on both sides coming across. So, we want to make sure people can see it and get in. And then when you're inside the plaza, typically what happens with a lot of older drivers or even younger drivers, is they correct late and try to get into, into the area. So, the, the goal would be to have signage available that's bright, so that everybody could see it, make their way into the facility, and not have to be missing anything or last minute. If we can have those signs, I believe, identical to the others in the building, it will allow folks the opportunity, from a safety standpoint, to be visible, to be able to see the signs. It's not a soil issue. The building is where it is. It's sort of stuck in between other buildings, so that could be an issue. But, I really want to say, from a safety standpoint, being able, as you come down that main road, seeing those signs on the backside especially, being able to turn in instead of going past or trying to cut across, I think safety would play a big role in this, for this case.
Thank you.
Bob, does that answer your question of vote?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it sounds like the justification is primarily for vehicular traffic safety, pedestrian safety, that sort of thing. Not specifically a hardship to Chick-fil-A. For example, it wouldn't, other than coordinating the traffic, it's not going to really impact the business, as I understand it, or...
Sure. The only, I sort of look at it to that point, is that, one of the things you want to do is be a good community member. And if you have a building that creates traffic issues, there could be accidents, crashes, it's, it's on behalf of the entity to sort of put up the things that prevent that. And so, you'll see the drive-through is set up in a particular way. Signage on that building is going to allow folks to see the building sooner. This is not a commerce issue, right? People are going to come for Chick-fil-A. But, it is something where, if somebody's in the neighborhood and they're not generally familiar with the roadway, or it's raining, we want to make sure those lights are available and the signage, so people can get in and not have any issues.
Thank you.
So, just to confirm, I think the two closest locations are Attleboro and Dedham?
Yes, and I think there's, well, again, you would know, there's one coming to Foxborough as well.
So, can you confirm that the signage is consistent in both of those other?
It is consistent across the board with those other communities. That's correct.
Okay.
And that includes the red LEDs.
Also say, historically, there's been a lot of discussion about signage at the Walpole Mall, and the zoning board over the years has recognized that it can be done with a variance to meet the, the needs of the town. So, anybody have anything else? Anybody from the public, any comments on the Chick-fil-A applicant? Okay. Seeing none. There's, oh, I'm sorry. We do have a couple pieces of correspondence in the package from the Board of, the Board of Health. The Department, the Health Department has no comments. The Walpole Fire Department has no comments at this time. And from the police, the attached plans have been reviewed for any impact on public safety and quality of life. The Walpole Police Department does not have any public safety concerns in relation to traffic in this case filed with the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. So, I think this is relatively straightforward. It's consistent with other signage in the, at the Walpole Mall area. So, everybody good on that? So, at this point, we ask the applicant if, if you want to close the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Be happy to close the hearing. Thank you.
Okay. This is just to close the hearing, a vote for the board. It'll be the five regular members voting on this. Does somebody want to make a motion to close case number 2410 for the sign variance at the Walpole Mall site?
So moved.
Motion moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion on the request for the variance?
This is to close the hearing?
Yeah, this is just to close the hearing. Okay. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. So, now, does, does anybody have any special conditions or any, or any conditions that they want to add on this? I'm just looking at, we're going to reference the, the plans. Does somebody want to make a, a motion to approve case number 2410 for 102 Providence Highway, based on the plans dated May 2nd, 2024? It shows both the plot plan and the, the renderings of the sign on, the signs on the four sides of the building. Does anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Drew. Is there anything else somebody wants to add on this? Okay. Hearing none. The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of case number 2410 for the Chick-fil-A signs, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained, so carried. Okay. Okay. So, the vote was four to one, and it passes. Okay. Okay. Next case, George, we're going to do Darwin now. I think we have a lot of people here for that. Okay. Next case we're going to take is 22-10, Wall Street Development Corporation, with property located at Darwin Lane, for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass General Law is 40B, to allow the construction of 28 home ownership, non-age-restricted condominium townhouses in six buildings on approximately 3.44 acres. And we have received a new submishal, submittal with a updated plan?
Mr. Chairman, I will be excusing myself.
Okay. Ms. Conroy's stepping down.
George, do you mind if I just advise the board members? I was scheduled for something tonight that I'm going to conduct by Zoom. I wasn't, when you continued to tonight, I wasn't involved in that, but since I've been working on this, so I may have to step out and take the Zoom during the hearing. I just wanted you guys to know, so you didn't think I was being rude. I'm coming right back in, in the event I get called during it.
Mr. Chairman, we can't hear Mr. Judy.
He was talking to the board member, saying that if he steps out, it's because he had a previously scheduled Zoom call. So, we have a more recent submittal, and we also have a letter dated June 3rd from Scott Horsley. We've got Tetra Tech's peer review dated June 1st, and the applicant and the engineer are here, so if you want to explain where you're at with this, with your plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a while since we've been here. Since we've last met, we've been submitting the appropriate information that was requested by the peer reviewer, Tetra Tech. Their most, most recent letter essentially indicates that we've complied with all of their requirements or notes that they've itemized in their various review letters. The one remaining item that seems to be, well, there are two remaining items. One has to do with the sewer pump station, which is being reviewed by the town engineer with our project engineer and the pump manufacturer. And the second issue has to do with the town bylaw related to the water resource protection overlay district. Other than that, I believe Tetra Tech has commented that all of the items have been resolved from a technical standpoint. We've also submitted information back in the early part of, in the early part of May, that discussed primarily the, the issue of the bylaw, the town bylaw, the zoning bylaw, and the definition of impervious surface under the bylaw. And under those parameters, the bylaw basically, I'll pull it out right now. The bylaw defines impervious surface as a material or a structure on, above, or below ground that does not allow precipitation or surface water to penetrate directly into the ground. And, and that definition is primarily related to the requirement that no more than 15% or 2,500 square feet of impervious surface be allowed on the site without the granting of a special permit. And there are other prerequisites to that, which we have met. So, the question tonight, or today, or as we move forward, is to whether or not we've provided the appropriate mitigation to comply with the definition of impervious surface under the bylaw. And in the bylaw, the bylaws clearly gives the zoning board the parameters of how, what to consider in granting the permit. So, what we've done over the past several weeks is we've done our homework on various mitigation measures that are compliant with the stormwater management standards and the EPA for providing more recharge and infiltration into the ground. Those two features that we've included into the site, or there are three features actually, the one is introduce a permeable paver for all the driveways and residential walkways. And the second would be to utilize a porous pavement for the entire road system that is in, on the site. And the third is to, we have the infiltration recharge from the rooftops that are going directly into the ground. Those three features qualify as being non-perme, a permeable surface and comply with the zoning regulation, and therefore would not be considered impervious. When you consider all those factors in the, the area of those, the roadways, the driveways, walkways, and the rooftops, it reduces the amount of actual impervious surface down to, I think, below 10%. So, we consider those to be positive improvements onto the site. We think we're in compliance as, as Tetra Tech indicates, that we've complied with the stormwater management regulations. And the only remaining opinion that seems to be out there is whether or not we comply with the local bylaw regulations. In our opinion, we do. There's been opinions offered by both Mr. Horsley and Tetra Tech. They haven't presented any information to contradict what we've provided as information. I mean, we've provided our supplemental information, documentation from the EPA, from the Mass Stormwater Regulations, from the manufacturer of the pavers. All of these features are considered very, very good mitigation measures for the promoting infiltration of stormwater. The one thing that we do need to do, as Tetra Tech has indicated, is we do have to amend our maintenance and operations and maintenance provision of the stormwater management, which regarding the porous pavement aspects of it. We, in another location that Tetra Tech was also the peer reviewer that used porous pavement, they adopted this, I'm not saying they adopted it, but they consented to it, operations manual, maintenance arrangement. Regarding the porous pavement, what was provided for is, the pavement, as you, as the name would imply, is porous, so that it allows for potential particles to infiltrate, you know, infiltrate into the, into the ground or into the pavement. So, it requires a vacuum sweeping of the pavement at least twice a year, or maybe even four times a year, to get any sediment that might have, you know, infiltrated into the, through the pavement. The second thing that it, there would be no sanding of the roadways under this project. And with this pavement, there is no sanding that would be during wintertime, that would cause the problem of clogging the, the pavement. So, no, no sand or salt in, in those areas. And no resealing or repaving of the, of the area that's under the porous pavement. So, it really has to be maintained on a regular basis. That could be a condition of your approval, if you so wanted to include that. But, we will present a revised operations and maintenance plan that is attached to the stormwater management report that is, that's part of the study that was done by gloss engineering. So, other than that, I mean, I think we've provided the information that has been asked of us. Would like the opportunity to review our waivers, to make sure that before the hearing is closed, that we've identified anything that we, you know, this has been going on for quite some time, in terms of timeframe. So, we'd like an opportunity to review the waivers that we've, see if there's any revisions to that that has, that has to happen. But, other than that, I think that's really kind of where we're at. I think we've provided the mitigation that, you know, to comply with the local bylaw, zoning bylaw in the resource district. So, I'll leave it at that.
So, town council, as far as the waivers, the waivers were submitted with the original application, and we, we have those, and that's part of the process. And the zoning board always reviews the waivers, you know, in a, in a public session. What's your?
Hearing or deliberations? Hearing session or deliberations?
Deliberations, yeah.
Yeah. And I think if you have, I'm comfortable with you considering them in deliberations, if you think you've received all the information you need on the waiver requests.
Okay. 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 Any other board members, any questions or comments before we open it up to the public?
Yes, a few questions about the, regarding the impervious pavement, or the pervious pavement, sorry. One of the points that Tetra Tech made was that the roof areas, if you just sum those up, and, you know, disregarded the rest of the site essentially, amounted to about 22% of the lot area, which was what they concluded was, in any event, impervious, even setting aside the issue of whether you should get full credit for the pervious pavement. Is that number not accurate, the 22%?
No. Well, I think the part that is, I think there's 19,000 square feet of the rooftops that are being directly channeled into recharge chambers, they don't, the water doesn't touch the ground. So, it's, it's, there's a credit, under the bylaw, there would be a credit for the water not going directly into the ground. So, 22%, I think of the site is 33,000 square feet of structures, 33,000 or 34,000 square feet. So, of that, 19,000 of it is being directed, directly into the ground, and is considered by stormwater to be clean water. So, that's part of the credit that we're applying to reduce the amount of impervious surface.
And then, the, you mentioned there wouldn't be any sanding, because it might clog the?
Right, right.
Pores in the winter. What about how we can handle a sort of ice, snow removal and snow clogging of, of the pavement, such that things could, you know, sheet runoff of icy areas or things like?
Yeah. Well, again, we've, we're going to treat it like the town treats their streets with, in that area. I've been, I've asked for their protocol, but they haven't given it to us. But, certainly, everything on Darwin Lane and Victoria Circle, they're handled the same, same way. So, we're going to follow the protocol that the town follows.
Right. I mean, I think the key, one of the key issues is the protection of the offer, obviously, and so, how that's going to be done without using some sort of chemical that might run off into that area is going to be important, at least to me.
Yeah. I, I agree with you. And then, but, we don't, we're, typically, there'd be no, no salting and sanding in areas that are sensitive to groundwater or water protect, well protection. So, we would apply that standard. So, but keep in mind that this is, this porous pavement is over and above what we're already providing in terms of the stormwater management system that we've designed for the, for the project. So, these are measures over and above what we're technically required to provide. So, but I'm happy to look into the treatment of, I just So, but I'm happy to look into the treatment of, I just, from what I'm reading, there's no sanding and salting, and there's, the town has a standard for areas, like every town does, where there's a water resource protection area, for limited salt, limited sanding. I don't have the answer to the question at this point, but that's really what would have to happen.
Okay. I think that's all I got for right now.
Do you know what the elevation change is for your project that you're proposing? When you first enter your project, there's a steep downgrade, right?
It's an 8% grade, I believe.
Okay, and what's?
Which is normal.
Right, but what's the elevation change on Darwin as a comparable for your treatment of snow or ice?
Well, the entryway, there's an 8% grade down to the, to the main drive, and that main drive is fairly flat, level.
Right.
So, it's not expected to be a problem for an 8%, an 8% grade.
So, do you know what the elevation is on Darwin? Because if you're going to match your, you said, right, you were going to, whatever's done on Darwin, you're going to do on this premises? But in my opinion, I look at it and I say, well, there's, there's a slope and a grade that people leaving your potential project would be having to accelerate through with ice and freezing water, whatever is building up on that roadway, whereas Darwin is a flat.
You mean entering or exiting?
Either one.
Yeah, well, I don't see, you know, exiting the site, you're going to go up an incline, right, and they're going to be on a level, on a level basis, so that wouldn't be, the only place that I would be concerned is someone entering the site and sliding if there was an icy condition on the roadway. But we're going to work through those parameters, and I'll have some additional information as we move forward.
And then, sorry, you said something about the extra maintenance for the system requires potentially more maintenance of the wells throughout the year? Is that correct?
No, not the wells. What happens is that
I mean, the catch basins, sorry.
Well, the catch basins are going to operate exactly the way they've operated. Nothing's going to change. The only thing that will going to be an added feature is that the pavement itself, which is sort of porous, it's like little popcorn-y type, that has to be vacuumed to keep particles from clogging the infiltration mechanism of the pavement itself. From what I understand, it's pretty standard procedure.
And that would be passed on to HOA or?
Oh, yeah, 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 this goes with the project.
Potential residents of this?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
I do have one follow-up. Remember my last question. Another point that Tetra Tech, and I think Mr. Horsley and our engineering department made the same point, that the use of pervious pavement is going to increase the potential for, you know, grease, oil, things to seep into the, into the ground that wouldn't otherwise if it were not a pervious surface. And can you speak to that and whether or not?
I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up because both, I'll speak to Mr. Horsley's claim anyways. Now, Mr. Horsley claims that this is a parking lot. Most of those contaminants that he's citing happen in parking lots. We're not parking any cars on the street. The cars are kept indoors, parked in garages. We don't have cars standing 20 hours a day or 10 hours a day where they have those kinds of contaminants that might infiltrate. So, I don't see that claim as being valid or supportable.
Excellent. Okay. At this point, we've, we have the information that's been provided, and the plans have changed. We've had the peer review of the plans, and we've got comments back from the peer review on it. Is there anybody from the public that wants to comment on this? And please remember that we already have letters in the record previously. We have Mr. Horsley's letter, but if somebody has something new that they want to bring up, that would be fine.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Dennis Murphy from Hill Law on behalf of the Butters. I know you have letters, and you've heard from me before. I just want to respond to the recent changes of the porous pavement. You've all asked really good questions. I'll make just a few points. This is a dangerous proposal, and I'll explain what I mean by that. The drinking water regulations, the state drinking water regulations, as Sean Reardon told you, limit impervious coverage in Zone 2 to 20%. Your own bylaw is more restrictive. It says 15%, but it gives you some leeway to allow more. Porous pavement is not collecting or treating stormwater runoff. It is just allowing it to flow through those bricks directly into the ground beneath. So, the reason I say it's dangerous is that instead of actually engineering a stormwater system like you have at the school, like you have anywhere in Walpole, that is designed to capture, collect, and treat stormwater before recharging it, this stuff falls on the pavement, collects whatever the cars have dropped there, whether they've parked overnight or they're just driving, and puts it right directly into the ground. So, this is actually, Mr. Petrosi refers to it as mitigation. I think it's aggravation, and I mean that not just that it's aggravating to us, but that it actually makes the project worse than what we had before they went to porous pavement. And it's also cynical, right? So, what they're telling you is, don't try to stop us. We can get around your silly regulation, which regulates impervious coverage in this district by doing non-impervious pavement. That's, that's the gimmick, and I think it is an engineering gimmick. Let me reiterate just two more things. In the Zone 2, Standard 6, which is the State Stormwater Handbook, and you don't have to take my word for it, this is in Horsley's letters, it's in Reardon's letters, I think it's probably in some of my letters, but I want to remind you, you're being asked to waive local bylaws. And I made this comment probably a year ago, you can't waive this one. And the reason is, Stormwater Standard 6 says that you, that in order to comply with the stormwater standards, the applicant must comply with more restrictive local regulations. That's your WRPOD. So, he has to comply. The other thing that I think is completely unresolved is, even if you were to credit, as Mr. Fitzgerald suggested, 100% of the pavers, the roof alone is over 20%. So, they still need a waiver or some kind of dispensation. You can't do it under the state drinking water standards, and I realize you guys are the zoning board, not dealing with drinking water, but that, you're in a Zone 2, which is very rare. I actually looked for 40Bs in a Zone 2. It just doesn't happen. People don't propose a 40B where the entire 28 units is within a Zone 2. There's no precedent for it. The Standard 6 says that you can't waive the local bylaw and still comply with the stormwater standards. I'm not going to belabor other comments. I think the board is focused on the right thing, which is the water quality impacts. I did submit letters, and I do know that another major issue for the board to consider is the length of the dead-end road. Remember, this is already an extended road. I think the planning board gave a waiver of the subdivision rules that allowed for my clients to have the lots at the end of the cul-de-sac. I haven't gone back and reread all of the subdivision covenants and all the things that's in my letters from almost a year ago. So, during your deliberations, where I won't get to talk to you, I would encourage you to look at that as another reason to be wary of this. And I guess, if this is my last opportunity to address the board, I would just make this, I sat where you did in my town for 10 years. I heard several 40Bs. I was always a conciliator. I always wanted to find a way to approve a project with conditions, to, you know, get to yes somehow. This is the rare instance where you can't get there, and I would urge you to deny the project because it's not going to comply not only with the regs, but also with protecting the public health of the, of the well. So, I appreciate it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Yes?
I get a kick out of the attorneys that come here and never built anything. So, this is from the EPA. I didn't make this up. This is what they consider to be best management practices. Permeable pavements are a stormwater control that allows stormwater to infiltrate through the surface of the pavement into the ground below, which is what your definition of impervious surface is the opposite. This is allowing the water to go into the ground directly. It's part of their green program for treating stormwater management. This is not a gimmick. This is not a fabrication. This is not a loophole. This is, this is what they're asking us to do as developers, to comply with the stormwater management for various projects. It just so happens that in this particular instance, in this particular location, it's best suited for infiltrating water into the ground without gathering the pollutants that is being, are being suggested here. So, it's not a loophole. I provided the information to the board as part of my submittal. It's, it's, it's the EPA, and if you go on further into the stormwater management regulations, you'll find similar commentary regarding recharging water directly into the ground. Not a gimmick.
Okay. Any other public comments? So?
Yep, there's nobody else.
Okay.
I think by this point in time, everybody knows me. My name is Joe Parlon. I live here in Walpole, and this project directly affects my dad's residence in the town of Walpole. I apologize, I'm not trying to extend your evening, not trying to extend the evening of the community tonight, but I would not be a good son, nor would I be a good citizen of the town of Walpole if I didn't get up here and speak to this project. The board's being asked to give an exemption that it doesn't have to give. So, I'd like to just give you a little piece of history in my experience. I was three years old when my parents moved me to the town of Walpole. About a handful of years later, when I was away serving in the Army, my parents put an addition on the side of their house on Elner Road, which included a deck. My father wanted to put a cement pad under that deck, under a deck off the side of a house, and the town of Walpole in 1991 said, no, a cement pad was a threat to the water supply. Well, I've read enough while studying this project that here we are today in 2024, and the State of Massachusetts Environmental Commission is not saying that Walpole water supply is at less risk. It is saying specifically that the water supply in Walpole is at greater risk. So, it might be zoning issues that are being dealt with here tonight, but the end result of these decisions is the water supply that provides the livelihood for the people of the town of Walpole. We use this water to eat, to cook, to drink, to clean, to water our grass, for our kids to play in that grass. We rely on this water. It is our water, and when it's gone, we all know, there is no other supply. We have to go outside of the town of Walpole. I think that, that looking at this exemption, I know it and understand it to be a difficult decision. Counsel tonight, when he got up and spoke, I, one of the things I learned, when I first started this, I was adamantly opposed because my dad was adamantly opposed, and I learned about what I heard tonight, the quote, how do we work to yes? How do we get to yes? Because at the end of the day, we don't want to impede practical and responsible business in our community. Walpole needs that, and it should be a staple of how we as a town and as a community do business. But I think that if you look at what's going on and what's being asked of the town and the exemptions that are being asked, and I know that there are concerns, not just from the community, the fire department has raised issues, there are environmental concerns, I think that if we look at the greater good of everything that is impacted by this, there is a moral responsibility for the people here to think about the community, the residents of Walpole, as the first priority. And I would plead with you, please consider denying this project. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the public on this?
Hi, I'm Mark Mannion. I live in Darwin Lane. Don't know about our town, hasn't built anything. I'm in construction. I do paving, I do all this. This paving he's on about is, it's manufactured to sell. It's, it does whatever. He's on about cleaning once or twice a year, vacuuming. That's crap because you have like, you have right now pollen on the ground, you've autumn, you have leaves, you have twigs, you have all this, this clogs all this up. So, it's, it's, it's there to sell, and it is a loophole. I know this because I've seen it. I've been around it. So, I just need to say.
Okay. Any other board members' comments? So, at this, at this time, does the board feel ready to close the hearing? We've got lots of information, it's gone back and forth for a while. Comfortable closing the hearing?
Yeah.
Does somebody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So, moved.
Okay, moved by Drew Delaney?
Second.
Okay, second by Tim. Patrick, do you feel comfortable drafting a decision based on the information that's been provided and the comments?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Bob, your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I know that the engineering department had some comments also about the sewer pumping station, but I don't know if that's something to be worked out in the details, you know, should we vote to approve or not, but there seem to be some substantial questions there.
Yeah, there's, I think my issue is that there's a lot of still, still questions, and we've been going at this, and we want to make sure that the issues are addressed in a timely and fair manner. So, okay. So, let's see, so the motion has been made to close the hearing by Mr. Delaney, second by Mr. Hegler. Do you have a question, Mr. Petrosi?
Yes, well, we're talking about the sewer pump station that's being reviewed by town engineer. How do we get that information into the record, or how are you going to handle that?
He's already submitted a letter. Town engineer submitted a letter on that.
Well, he submitted a letter that asked us to make some changes to the plan. So, are we going to be allowed to submit those changes, or?
I think that at this point, we've been going around this and
We just got his letter last week. I mean, what are you talking about?
But you've, this has been a concern from the first meeting when you talked about the type of pump.
But this is, this is the problem that was created by the town DPW by requesting a pump station that is different from what we proposed, and a delay in getting us the information regarding the suppliers that do business with the town of Walpole. This is not a Wall Street or a project engineer problem. This is an information or communication problem between the town DPW and giving us the information.
Would that be a minor modification on a project like this? Would that be a minor modification on a project like this?
Well, I mean, backing it up a little bit, if you close the hearing, motions already been made, if you close it, Mr. Petrosi can't respond any further. You can't take in any further information.
Right.
So, you know, you've seen the DPW letter. If you're comfortable closing the hearing in light of that, you know, I don't see a problem with that. But you can have other submissions. And, you know, project modification is only going to be relevant if you end up approving the project.
Be conditioned as well.
It can be conditioned, right. Okay. Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board members on this? Okay, all those in favor and voting on this will be the five that are here and those who've been here for all the hearings. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so this hearing is closed, and the board will, over the next couple of meetings, you know, move forward on the process.
John, do you think it maybe is a good idea to schedule deliberations now? I think you would want me there maybe for that.
Yeah. So what's available coming up for deliberation?
You want to give Patrick enough time to?
So in terms of the 40-day timeframe?
You've got 40 days from now.
June 17th or July 10th? So June 17th, I think we just have one thing on the agenda.
Let's do the 17th and.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the luxury belt is July 10th. I think we can get a draft together by the 17th, and if it needs to be continually worked on, there's another opportunity for another meeting.
Okay. Okay, so the board will pick up this. The public hearing's closed, but the board will have discussions at our meeting on June 17th, 7:00 PM here at Town Hall.
Do we want to make a motion to continue?
Do we need to make a motion to continue?
It's closed.
No, it's closed.
Yeah, you're not continuing. You're just scheduling it for that night.
Okay, so that case is closed. We have so much information, we'll take a look at it, and we'll be working on a decision. The next case for tonight. Next case for tonight is case number 24-8-1 Fox Hill, and this was a continued hearing. So is the applicant here for Fox Hill?
You just don't like the green ones.
Okay. We have a couple pieces of correspondence. One from the Board of Health, and this has to do with storage of materials. The Walpole Board of Health Regulations requires every owner and every operator other than owner of a site at which toxic or hazardous materials are stored in quantities totaling at any times more than 50 gallons liquid volume or 25 pounds dry weight shall register with the Board of Health the types and quantities of materials stored, located, and the material stored, location, and method of storage. Based on the information provided by the applicant, they will be storing less than 50 gallons of hazardous materials on the site. Therefore, they do not need to register with the Health Department at this time. Okay, you've provided an updated plan. Do you want to walk us through your updated plan?
So previously, it was talked about having storage containers for the hazardous materials. So we actually have a mix room, if you're looking at it, to the left of the spray booth labeled Mix Room. That's our explosion-proof room that all the hazardous materials will be stored in.
And what about the, there's floor drains in this building? Are those connected to this part?
No.
Anybody else have questions on this? Are you comfortable with keeping under the 50 gallons of hazardous materials?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the public with a question or comment on this? Hearing none. It seems like it's moving right along.
Thanks for getting the plan stamped by the engineer.
Yep. No, and so I think that unless somebody has anything, I think we're ready to close the hearing and move forward on this. Everybody good? Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to close case number 24-8 for 1 Fox Hill Drive?
So moved.
Moved by Judy, second by Drew. This is just to close the hearing. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the special permit under Section 123C 2 and 6 of the zoning bylaw to allow the use, storage, and handling of liquid hazardous materials in the amount of greater than household quantities within the Water Protection Overlay District, based on the set of plans submitted with a revision date of May 30th, 2024?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are there any conditions on something like this?
Well, we had some standard conditions that were used for Renma Drive, but those were because it was over 50 gallons. So.
Should there be a condition just expressly prohibiting more than 50 at the second?
Prohibiting what?
More than 50 gallons on the side.
Yeah, I think that that would make it extra clear.
The only other thing I would suggest is make sure there's no painting done outside the paint booth, because I know sometimes other body shops that I've been in contact with, they like to do a little spot painting outside the booth.
Okay.
We don't do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be two conditions. First condition, just making it clear that no more than 50 gallons. Second one, no painting at all outside of the paint booth, from somebody who knows the field. Thank you, Tim.
So sorry, it just needs to be, so I don't have like a, no one made the motion or seconded it.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I have a point of clarification.
Yes.
The plans are revised, but on May 30th, they were stamped 6/3, if you're going to reference the plans.
Do you want me to add stamp 6/3?
The stamp date should be there.
I would also probably identify who's voting on the case.
Okay, it'll be, has, yeah, this has only been open for.
It's only been open for one.
One previous.
I wasn't there.
You were here.
I'm not in the book.
Okay. Okay, so Tim was here. Okay, so it'll be these five, the five members on this end. Okay, so change both the revision date and the stamp of 6/3, no more than 50 gallons. And I don't think it's, I think it's covered under state law, but if there's ever a spill, there's notification requirements. But that's all, that's all under state law, so I don't think it's necessary. Does anybody think? You should have anything on that?
I think to your point, I think some of this is also followed under state law, so the applicant will need to go through discussions with our Health Department and Fire Department in terms of storage, so.
Good. So does somebody want to make a motion to the effect that we've just outlined?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the special permit for 1 Fox Hill, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay, good luck with your business there.
Thank you so much.
Next case we have is Brook Lane, case number 24-1, Wall Street Development, 7 Brook Lane, special permit under Section 6C 4A of the Walpole zoning bylaws for more than one principal building on a lot, and this is for five units in a residential development at that location.
Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself.
Okay, Judy's recusing herself from this case. Petrosi, good evening again.
Yes, sir. Lou Petrosi for Wall Street Development. So since we last met, we've submitted additional information and revised plans to, one of the information that the board was requesting was analysis of the turning apparatus for the fire vehicles, which we provided, and I believe the Fire Department has accepted as noted. The second thing was, we submitted revised plans to address comments, previous comments by the town engineer, which I think have since been reviewed again, and very, very minimal response. And so I'm not quite sure what other additional information would be required. We are in front of the Conservation Commission under the local bylaw, which is proceeding accordingly, and that's pretty much it. We're hoping the board will give us the blessings of a special permit, and so we can proceed with the project.
Do we have a letter? I didn't see the letter in my package from the Fire Department about the turning radius.
Do you remember looking at it? I don't know if that was at the last meeting though.
No, it was the letter that I just asked you to load onto the website the other day.
Well, it was in our packet. I know we got it recently though. I know we received it, Lou. I'm just saying, it might have been received earlier.
The other thing that we asked for at the last hearing was for the parcels of land to be identified as far as the ownership.
Yeah, I think that's been done.
That has been done, and so it's listing Wall Street Development Corporation as owning
The half.
Half of the end of Burns Ave., and then now a formerly Clarence Campbell owning on the other side.
Right.
There's also, oh, there is a rectangle in there. What is? I guess my question is, who owns that?
Little box?
Yeah.
Well, nobody's claimed ownership of that little box. It's currently, I don't know how you'd want to call it, but you can't put anybody's name on it. We're not claiming ownership. We've never claimed ownership of any of it. We've only claimed rights over it.
But on that, that abuts your.
We're not using it, though.
No, you're not using it, but it abuts what you're claiming you do own.
No, no, we're not claiming we own that. Oh.
No.
That little box. Yeah, that little box. What are we claiming about? We're not claiming ownership of that box at all.
Right, so, but it's in the plan, so who does own it?
The guy from 1910, I guess. I'm not quite sure who owns it, to be quite honest with you. We're not claiming ownership of it. We never did. We only claimed that we had rights over it. Same thing with this whole process of the private way. We never claimed that we owned any of it. We only claimed that we had the right to travel over it. So if you go back through the title, the long involved process, I mean, we've spent many, many, many hours on the research, so.
Oh, good, thank you. Okay, so May 15th, they find that the turning radius is acceptable, a turning analysis, and the hydrant layout is acceptable, but they do prefer to see a looped water main whenever possible.
Right. And unfortunately, that little box that you're referring to is keeping that looping from happening.
So, yeah, for this many units on a dead-end water surface, that's not great, is it?
Well, we've been in front of the water and sewer commission a couple of times, so they haven't objected to it, and they know this, they've approved it actually. We're right now negotiating some improvements in exchange of for waiving fees. So what we are providing, in the event that a future looping of that water main becomes a reality, we are providing the water company, the town anselement, to do the work on our property, to do that work. So it's already, Brook Lane is already a dead-end water main, so.
Right, just a handful of poems on that. Does anybody have any questions or comments at this time? Are there any neighbors or butters or anybody that wants to make a question or a comment on this?
Kathy Campbell, 3135 Burns Avenue. I appreciate the fact that part of the parcel has been labeled with Clarence Campbell's name, and I don't have a copy of the survey that I turned in here a couple of weeks ago or the last meeting. That piece of property is not Burns Ave. Private Way B. I know I'm splitting hairs here, but that piece of property has a map and page number on it from the survey I gave you. And as I said last time I spoke, there's already a plan in the Registry of Deeds that already says Burns Ave. Private Way B., and that is not what that piece of property is legally labeled. We have a. We've, we have a deed and we have a survey registered in the registry of deeds with the, with proper ownership.
So, let me, um.
Sure.
It says, what do, what do you think it should say?
So, I, I apologize, I don't have my, my survey on me, but I believe that our surveyor has labeled that with a map, map twenty. Our, our A.S. Elliott, our, our, our survey has actually identified that piece of property belonging to a map, book and page under Clarence Campbell's name.
Okay. But dimensionally, this is correct, which, which shown here, right?
Not according to our survey.
So the dimensions are not, they don't line up with what you have?
Yep. But, but at this point, I'm, I'm just concerned that we label that piece of property with the proper ownership and not call it Burns Ave. Private Way B. It has, it has never... This started out as a forty, forty-foot by one-hundred-foot piece of property that got labeled Burns Ave. Private Way. And then it got split down the middle and it was labeled A and B. And, and now the A is, is, is under Wall Street Development, which is leftover land from the house that was there. The B piece is labeled Clarence Campbell. Clarence Campbell owns that piece of property, but labeling it Burns Ave. Private Way B is, is, it, it's not legally what that, what that piece of property should be labeled.
Now I understand what you.
Okay.
Yeah, now I get it.
Yeah.
It should just be Clarence Campbell.
It should be Clarence Campbell.
Not?
Not Burns Ave. Private Way B. Again, I, I apologize, I'm splitting hairs, but we've come this far, and thank you for labeling the property, appreciate that, but if we can just take that other label off of it, it would make me feel better. Thank you.
Mr. Petrosi, do you want to comment on the correct labeling of that?
I'm, I'm not an engineer, but I only do what the engineers say they have to put on the plan, so we did identify it as the underlying ownership, whether or not it's Burns Avenue or some other road, Jennings Road, or whatever it is. I mean, it's beyond my pay grade.
But where did the Burns Ave. Private Way come from?
Well, it comes from back title of the property, if you go all the way back and I don't want to rehash, you know, the title going back to nineteen-something or eighteen-ninety-seven. But essentially, private ways, as I mentioned to you last time we met, private ways, the people on either side own to the middle typically. Mrs. Campbell has provided a legitimate argument based on her deeds that they own that strip. But again, we've never claimed ownership of that, of either part of that. We just claimed, we just interpreted the law as us having rights over it. Now, part of our arrangement by doing this cul-de-sac is to relinquish those rights as part of our arrange, our agreement to settle our disagreements, so that it's going to become a moot point either way. We're not going to be using it and we're not going to be claiming any rights over it, so the way it's labeled is, putting a label on it is not going to change what the underlying use of it is, but we're, under our, under our plan, we're not, we're not using it, we're not planning to use it, and we're relinquishing our rights to use it in the future. So I don't, I don't know what more we can do other than, other than that.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? Anybody from the public want to comment on this?
Cheryl Hayes-Monville, eight Brook Lane. We've been at this a really long time. Construction or the groundwork for it has already started. As a direct abutter, I really didn't know what to expect, as I've never experienced something like this before. I would have to say over the past month or two, the crew that has worked out there, I think has been very good. They've worked quickly. They've tried to mitigate the impacts to Brook Lane. They have communicated to us. I've had a few small issues that either I've been able to go over and talk to them about, or I've talked to the developer about. Everything was like handled, like immediately. So, in my world, if you approve fifteen houses and things continue the way they've started, then hopefully that this would end up being a good project. The relief of those extra five houses would be, I think, tremendous to Brook Lane, to do the fifteen instead of the twenty. It would mitigate, you know, extra traffic, everything, they wouldn't look like a bunch of row houses stuffed in there. And I think it's something that we would end up okay with. But I will say, like, the, the contractors that are out there have done a very good job. And I usually don't compliment contractors, I have contractor fatigue, so they have done an outstanding job. Okay?
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments. Okay, anybody else?
Do we have the five members eligible to vote on this?
Yes.
We do, okay, thank you.
It's.
Yeah, it was just Drew missed one meeting.
What's that?
Drew missed one meeting.
Yeah.
But he's fine.
He's mullioned.
Drew, Drew, Drew mullended, so.
Drew mullined?
Yep.
What's that?
Drew did the mulling.
Yes.
Okay. So. Yes. Mrs. Campbell.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah, just.
I'm sorry. Is, is Kathy Campbell, thirty-one, thirty-five Burns Avenue. Will you make the decision on what that piece of property should be labeled, or is the decision made that you're going to use the plans that are in front of you?
So, as you're talking, I have the engineer behind shaking his head. Please, why don't you just come up? Just come.
If you make the decision, it will change any decision. I'll take it off. We'll just leave the, we'll take, it's not a big deal. Seven?
Yeah, eight.
So.
Clarence Campbell. Clarence Campbell's.
Take Clarence Campbell's?
No, take Burns Ave. Private Way.
We'll take the Burns Ave. Private Way off.
I apologize, take Burns Ave. Private Way B off and leave Clarence Campbell on.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's fine. I don't have a problem.
Could that be a condition on the?
I guess we could condition that so that.
We will, we would make that as a condition of the special permit. So, basically what we're looking at, folks, is there's a forty-B comprehensive permit for twenty units on the site, or this revised plan of fifty non-afford, no, no affordable component to it. And the question is, what's going to be best for the town of Walpole, the neighbors, the applicants, and how do we move forward on this? And we've heard from one of the neighbors saying that, you know, she's been happy with the work, she, she feels that fifteen would be better as opposed to the, the twenty, twenty units that would be there. What's the take from board members?
Yeah, I'll just, so we're obviously operating at a different standard than under forty-B for this. And I appreciate the comments from the butters that they much prefer this to the forty-B project. And the standard under the special permit is that the, you know, basically the, the layout of the buildings, I think it's, let's see, design and placement of the buildings will be in harmony with the general character of the neighborhood, streetscape, driveway, building placements, setbacks, volume and spacing. And so I think the board needs to be comfortable granting it under that standard. It's kind of an awkward situation in a sense that we're sort of being asked to approve under a special permit standard, something that we, that's sort of better than the forty-B project, but it still has to pass muster under the special permit standard. So, what, the board needs to be comfortable that what's proposed, I think, is, is in harmony with the general character of the neighborhood. And I don't know if we should discuss that further, but that's just an issue that I'm kind of wrestling with in my mind.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue, basically. And if you look at the, the houses, they're on, you know, probably half to third acre lots, and there's, you know, and now we have a situation where we've got, what is it, three-point-four-four acres of, no, that's the other site. But it's, 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 the, the density is higher, and is that consistent with the, the neighborhood, as, as Bob pointed out? So, that's one of the, the questions that has to be answered, so, yes.
Judy Conroy, abutter to the project. I believe you have a package that was sent to Patrick from Mr. Conroy. He is on his way, and would, I would appreciate it if you would, if you haven't seen it, if you would take a few minutes to look at it, and again, he is on his way to speak.
So there should be a letter at the end of the.
Yep.
So that information, do we bring down a copy of that?
I have the hard copy.
It is in, I think it's around fifty pages, so imprint out all of it. We do have one for the record, though. Can we provide that to the chair?
Right, and that's, that's not talking about, that's talking about, Jack Conroy's talking about the, the layout on Burns Ave. And who owns what, right?
I, I believe so. I was not the author of the letter, so.
Right.
I'm just asking for your patient, patience for a couple of minutes while he drives down, on his way.
Okay. So, do you have any, what Bob brought up was the, the issue of character of. What was the, character of the neighborhood? That's what I. Yeah. Character of the neighborhood. And that's, I think, what it's going to come down to, because a lot of this discussion about the ownership of the property, that, that's not part of, that's not part of the site that we're looking at, at this point.
Okay, well, as I said, I did not author the letter, so if we, I'm, I'm stalling. I won't sing. I'm just, he, it would be best that he speak to that.
Right, that's, that's fine, we.
So if you want me to stand at the mic and wait until he gets here? I can sit down, you guys can chat, or what?
I think the board has, has concerns about the, the density of this development compared to the abutting, the abutting properties, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I just want to comment on the ownership and the discussion about the changing the name on the, the property. I think we just need to be clear that this board is not determining who owns what, it's just labeled on the plan, and to the extent there's a dispute around who owns it, that's not something that the board can either weigh in on nor should we, so.
No, I, I would agree to Bob's point, that's something that's a little out of the jurisdiction of the board when it comes to what the relief that's being asked. It's really, we're just looking at six-C four-A.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the offer to change the plan, and you should go ahead and do that, I'm just saying, by agreeing to that change or putting that condition on the decision in no way implies that we have made any determination as to who owns what, that's out of our ballpark.
Well, here's a land surveyor, so.
Sorry.
Cheryl Hayes-Monville, eight Brook Lane. I, I guess I'm a little bit confused, because we already have the forty-B that was originally approved, and then subsequently, the developer submitted this plan. And although there might be some little bit of configuration differences, it is overall like less homes. So, as a person who actually lives there, you know, you would kind of venture to say that from the get-go, someone could actually say that none of the projects ever fit in to what was like sitting on Brook Lane, since now this is the entrance to the actual development. But I can tell you that twenty homes certainly didn't fit in to the characteristics of the neighborhood, and it got approved. And granted, you were under certain like restrictions and guidelines because of that forty-B, and I, it limits you. But at the end of the day, if you deny this project, we're just going back to a forty-B. I mean, it's simple as that, unless I'm wrong.
The difference would be there'd be an affordable housing component in that.
Right.
This has no affordable housing component.
Correct. It doesn't, you know, kind of the characteristics of the neighborhood, I'm like, well, you know, in my world, we're like stretching it, because I'm like, well, if you have fifteen, you have less, there's a little bit more room, there's a little bit more green, there's less traffic, there's like less everything, so is that like less density for the, the three individual homeowners who live on that street? Absolutely. You know, and I know that there's more than just Brook Lane, I know there's Union Street and the other streets around it, but at the end of the day, in my world, you're driving onto Brook Lane to get into this development. So like, we become that world. And if someone is willing to reduce it, make it look a little bit more open, has already worked with conservation to put in more greenery and do those things, I'd rather see that than twenty homes. And I guess that's where like, again, because I live there, is right next to me. That to me is a better project overall. Thank you.
Oh, hold on, one question. Instead of fifteen homes, what about twelve homes?
Well, I always say less is best. But I think, you know, that's a conversation that has to happen with the developer. I would love to see twelve, I would love to see fourteen. But if fifteen's the best I can do, then I'd rather see the fifteen. You know, sure, less negotiation, I'm all for it. But it's better than twenty, and that's kind of the world that we're faced with.
Well, actually, historically, the, this case came to the zoning board before my time.
Yes, I was here for the very first meeting, couldn't stand Lou, hated him.
And, and the zoning board denied the.
Yes.
The special permit request.
Absolutely.
Because it was asking for, I believe.
I think it was fourteen or twelve, twelve or fourteen.
Bobby, you were on, do you recall?
I don't remember that.
Lou, what was the original?
Twelve or fourteen.
So the, the original project was fourteen, the sole access was off of Burns Avenue. We've picked up access onto Brook Lane, just simply adding the home that's there into the project, so essentially same place we were when we first started, but with a different, different project design. So, and I will say, I mean, we don't make the regulations in the town of Walpole, but we comply with the regulations, and this complies with the regulations, it's one unit for every ten thousand square feet, and we do that, we comply with that. So, it would kind of disingenuous to say that it's too dense, if it's too dense, you should change your zoning requirements.
It's based on the surrounding.
Well, there's three houses on Brook Lane, as Cheryl has mentioned, so I don't think we're affecting the character of the neighborhood that is being suggested here. I think we're going to be enhancing the neighborhood with the product that we're going to be building. building, um, and your general residence district is specifically geared for this type of development, so, and the zoning requirements, we're not asking for any waivers, we're not asking for any variances.
Asking for a special permit.
We're asking for a special permit that is, has specific criteria that you, uh, to abide by or consider, and, uh, hopefully, you will consider them favorably for everyone concerned.
Okay.
And, and in part, just remember, like, how we actually started this project was because we actually contacted Lou and said, would, would you consider this? Like, now that Brook Lane is the entrance, because we didn't want that cut-through street, it would have been just an extension of Route 1 from our street through Burns Ave. to Pleasant, you know, we approached him, and, and I was probably the, the biggest one, saying, like, would, would you consider something else? I know you've been doing it for, like, six or seven years, but at the end of the day, you know, we really feel that we kind of took on that burden of saying, yep, like, coming, coming through the street, like, we'll accept it, we'll live with it, and, and asked him to potentially reduce the number of houses. And again, you know, if I'm going to go to Lou and, and say, oh, put nine in there, you know, that's probably not going to happen. Um, so that's why we were like, yep, like, 15 was better than 20, but like, we actually approached him, so I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you. Did we have your letter in front of us, Mr. Conroy? Yep?
Yeah, that's the reason I...
June, June 5th?
Yep, Jack Conroy, abutter, 38th party, Burns. And what you have in front of you after talking to the attorney, it comes down to this very simple, is this, this piece of land over there, right here, not so much that, this has been a, a bounce, a bouncing ball. Matter of fact, there's nothing to say they own it or not, and we've been in litigation, us and the Campbells, since 2017 over this, so I appreciate if you read the letter and see what says, it was my letter, but it was formulated with the attorney, because we're still in litigation over this, and that hasn't been decided, and that piece is part of it. Now, would I be here tonight if, very simple, this cul-de-sac was pulled back to that edge? No, I don't have a reason, because he's not using, something isn't his. If Lou wants to use everything within his property that he owns, and he can show he has a right to, I got no issue with it. If he just moved that back, not an issue with me, okay? Because he can do, within the zoning, what he wants to do. That's all we're here tonight to talk about, is the fact that he is, is using a piece of land that he does not have title to, and it has changed since the first submission back in 2013, uh, 14, 15, and it keeps moving, but if he could, if he could, uh, if the court case was settled, which it hasn't, if he showed that he owned it, I wouldn't be here either. But, that's still up in the air, and the fact is, as far as whether, when you present a plan to any board, you must present it accurately, and until such time that we have either the court decision, or it pulls back, I'd say, you know, if I was me, I'd pull it back, but that's what we're talking about.
So, we have a stamped plan from a registered land surveyor, saying that that rectangle of land is owned by Wall Street Development?
Yes, and I have said it before, if you, and I've given the history there, I have yet to see how it is transformed to originally a double-wide, and then Al Campbell's are on there. This is morphed. If you go back to every plan that's submitted, between the planning board, yourself, the 40Bs, this thing has just morphed without ever saying anything. Now, did he stamp it? Yes, but here is the crux of the thing. They have nothing to say that they own this piece, and to claim it's an extension of Burns is incorrect, because legislature in 1972 said, you own a private road, you own to the middle, you own to the middle. The Campbells actually own that piece, that 20 feet, so that's not part of a road, they bought it from Dolutus. So, that road doesn't even exist, if you want to even go that far, but, like I said, I sent it, it was formulated with everything, and you'll see the court case and everything else. If it hadn't settled, like I said, we wouldn't be here tonight, but it's not. And the simplest thing is move, move it back onto his, to the, get it off the lot that nobody knows who owns it, and it's done, at least from my perspective.
So, the law case that you've provided, this is Wall Street Development Corporation suing you and the Camp...
Yeah.
Basically, a lot of, a lot of the Campbell family.
Yeah, they served, we volleyed.
Okay.
But it, it still comes down to, there is nothing concrete evidence-wise that has shown how it's a private way, because if the Campbells, it's not a private way, they own the property outright, that they bought from Dolutus, so it's just at the end of a road, someone took to the middle of the street, and you got that little piece left. As a matter of fact, what's interesting is that little block in front of my house. How come that doesn't say an, how come it doesn't say on the plan, an extension of Burns? Doesn't, it just shows a blank.
Right.
So I guess it jumps over.
Okay. I wish we had town council here for this, because...
You can always ask them, but, um, like I said, to me, I'd just pull it back, and Lou and I will hold hands on the way out.
Right, Mr. Chairman, just, just so, you know, just, I, I think Mr. Conroy is not accurately reflecting the history of that strip of land. Uh, if you may recall that...
Why don't you just sit down?
Hold on, you were finished, he, he came up.
Last thing, ask them if the court case is settled.
It's, right.
It's not.
Right, so...
So, Mr. Chairman, just may I just re-give a little history? So, that strip of land where the cul-de-sac is now, that was, the, the property was, um, there was a house on that lot, 48 Burns Avenue, that lot had 100 feet of frontage on Burns Avenue, which was considered, that was considered Burns Avenue. So, um, as I mentioned earlier, a private way, people on either side own to the middle. In this particular instance, the Campbells own their 20, which they owned originally. All we claimed was that we had rights over it. We, as successor to the 48 Burns Avenue, we own to the middle, whether we declare that we own it physically, or we take an easement over it, which was what it was to begin with as a right-of-way, it's still within our right to do that. Uh, Mr. Conroy is correct, there is litigation that's pending. Um, it, it may get settled, or it may get partially settled, I'm not quite sure what will end up being there, but it's certainly a civil matter that this board shouldn't really get involved with at this point, because some of the issues that... When that, when that matter was started, there was only an access from Burns Avenue. The issues related to that litigation have since been muted, because we're now going off of, uh, Brook Lane, and as I mentioned earlier, that we're not claiming to use, in this particular case, the Campbell's piece, we're not claiming any rights to it, and we're not going to pursue any access over it. That's part of our commitment that we've made, both in the 40B application and in this application. And it is true that we're here primarily because we were asked to come here to propose this 15-unit development. We had no idea that we wasted four years when we could have done this as a special permit from the beginning, if the board were able to do it. We comply with the zoning requirements to do it, so, um, I'm hoping that the board will favorably consider the application, and, uh, um, that's all I can say, I mean, it's, it's, it's been a long time since we've been here.
Bob, your thoughts on this question about the land?
Well, again, the, the board's not going to resolve that question, and if, if litigation, through the litigation, it turns out that the applicant doesn't have rights to that property, then he can't build the project as it's shown. So, that's the risk that the developer's taking, as I see it. We're not going to resolve here, who owns what, that's not our job, and, um, so, to the extent there's an approval based on this plan that shows the cul-de-sac where it is, um, you know, the bill, the applicant proceeds at risk that it actually does have the rights to build the project. If they don't, then they have to come back in a minute.
Okay.
My, my comments is, what I sent you guys tonight reflects what Kyle Ball, our town engineer, had done previously, he questioned all this stuff, so I just want to reiterate that. Uh, what I get concerned is, if, if the approval's given, and he just goes down and gets a building permit, they're not going to take action, meaning they're not a lawyer either, and next thing you know, we have, Bill ends up there and finds out that it's not right, well, I've done too much. To me, is, if you, you could always approve it, it's approved based upon this, the settle of the litigation, it's pretty simple. That's where it's going to come down, no matter what you do, but at least you get that in your decision, that someone can read down the hall, because this, you know, things can get tumbled, and all sorts of stuff, like, when you have people come and go, you know, over the years, but that's, because in theory, it hasn't been settled, so in theory, he can't do it, and if you give him the approval, he can jump down, but if it says, hey, once it's, if it's settled in court, then he'd come back, if it's not settled, however you want to do it, but at least there's some protection for us, that we don't see 15 houses popped up, and then the courts say, oh, no, now what do you do? Then a lot of people don't want to really push the issue, so, that's, that's only my only suggestion, thank you.
Let me just have one last crack at this, okay? Because I, I don't think anything you heard tonight gave the board any information that Mr. Conroy may own that strip of land. So, right, so, exactly, so, there's only one of two people that can own that strip or have rights over that strip, and that would be Wall Street Development, or the predecessor entitled to Wall Street, Mr. Felton, or, if we go back to when the way was created, I think the guy's name was Morse, or, back in 1897, so, there's nobody else in this room that has rights over that 20-foot strip, besides Wall Street, that's alive. So, the litigation that Mr. Conroy is referring to is related to access from Burns Avenue over that little block of land that he's claiming rights over, for us to get to Pleasant Street. That does, that issue does not, um, exist for this project, since we're going out to Brook Lane, so...
So, just asking a question here. If you dropped that, because you're the one who filed the case...
Yeah, no, I have the, I have control over that litigation, yes.
If you dropped that case...
Yeah, exactly.
I guess this wouldn't be an issue, is that correct?
Possibly right. There, there are some ramifications that we have to discuss with legal counsel, but you're, in essence, you have the, you've hit it right on the nut.
And I'm falling into the trap of talking about something that really isn't, was before.
Yeah, it shouldn't really be part of the consideration here, but just through, you know, it's been a long process, six, seven years, we've been various project proposals, so, we'd like to get beyond, essentially, we're back to where we were six years ago, with 15 houses, 14 plus the one that we bought, so, um...
But also, to the point, the zoning board did deny that.
Well, I don't want to get into the politics of denial or not, okay? Why they denied it, we decided not to go to court on it. We may have a different feeling this time around, but we certainly believe that we're developing something that's in harmony with the character of the neighborhood, which is, we're actually creating our own neighborhoods, three houses that are there, we're creating our own neighborhood, that are going to be comparable or better than what's on Brook Lane currently, so, I don't know how you could apply that standard and not, and not think that we're going to be enhancing the neighborhood, so, um, what happened seven years ago shouldn't be, is not an issue, it's a completely different project.
Okay.
One last question. Hey, you keep coming on, sit down. I'm tired, you have to turn the by. Do me, not a favor, but just look at the original A and R that they did, it's going to show you, there's no frontage for 48 Burns. Just look, they did it, not us, it was done by GLM engineering, so it doesn't look anything like that, so you're just going to see, I just want you to just kind of look, go back and look at those plans, so you can see what's going on, because there's a whole morph, and it just, you know, that's all, thank you.
I'm not getting up this time.
Okay.
So, there you go, some Jack Irish we made up, just like that.
So, um, we've heard from some of the abutters on, on this, we've got it before us, what, where do board members feel they're at on this case? Do people want to close it and move on, and let the civil litigation run out, um, or, uh, you know, close it, move on, and, you know, or not close it and keep it open, so... Mark, your thoughts?
I'm in camp, close it.
What?
I'm, I'm ready to close it, I don't think we're going to get anything more into this.
Bob?
Yeah, I think in terms of closing, I think we're fine, I don't know if we want to deliberate or hold it for deliberation at another meeting, but I'd be in favor of closing the hearing at this time.
Okay. What's your thoughts on as far as, you know, deliberate, you know?
Well, I guess the, I think there's a lot of interesting questions that were, um, you know, as I mentioned before, a different standard. I think one of the issues is, should we consider whether, because the 40B has been approved, is that considered the neighborhood, since it could be built without any further relief from us, and therefore, we should compare this project to what was proposed as 40B? If that's the case, then I would be inclined to say, yeah, this is more in harmony with the neighborhood than what was proposed, uh, under 40B. The other piece of that, I think, is the bylaw does permit multiple buildings on a lot, and so, this, uh, is consistent with that, so, I think there may be an argument that implicitly, it's consistent with, then, in harmony with the neighborhood, because the density is as permitted under the, the zoning bylaw, so we couldn't, on a density basis, say it's not consistent with the neighborhood, which was sort of my initial take on it. Once, when you compare the density of this compared to the neighborhood, I think it's difficult to say that, you know, 15 units, that packed tightly compared to the adjacent lots and the single-family homes, you know, whether it's consistent and in harmony with that, I think is a closer question, but I think if we look at it from the, either through the lens of comparing this to the 40B, which I don't know honestly whether we can do that legally, because it's not built, so it's not as though they're, they're changing that, but they do have the rights to do it, so it seems like it's a relevant consideration. Um, and also the fact that the density as proposed is consistent with the so many square feet per unit that would be allowed under the zoning bylaw, so, um, in that sense, it's in harmony with, at least with respect to the density piece, um, with what would otherwise be required, so, you know, I can see that leaning in favor of, of approval, but I, you know, love to hear other people's thoughts on that, and whether, happy to keep the discussion going now, as opposed to deliberating at another time, but those are sort of the issues in my mind I'm kind of wrestling with.
Drew, what's your thoughts?
I wouldn't have a problem closing the hearing, I think, to Bob's point, I, I wouldn't mind having a little bit of a deliberation on kind of the, uh, parameters around the bylaws of the special permit and allowing the multiple units on the parcel as opposed to the 40B, just make sure, kind of run it through all the processes and...
Tim, where are you coming in on this? Okay.
Close and deliberate a little bit.
Okay. Okay. So I think, and.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Of the applicant? You're, I think somebody mentioned you were working on the site currently.
Yes.
And you're working under the order of conditions from the previous application, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And you're conforming with those, there hasn't been any, I know.
We're, yeah, we're constructing the site. There's essentially no difference in the infrastructure from the 40B project to this project. It's essentially the same roadway, same utilities, same detention basin, same everything.
My only thing was a lot of our conditions were based around the presumption that you would be traveling out on Burns and now you're.
We're not.
Coming through Brook.
Right.
There's three families there and some small children, so it definitely.
Under the 40B, that was approved, last approved, this was the same, the same access was on Brook Lane.
Okay.
So Burns Avenue has been out of the picture for quite a while. So nothing is, from the time that the board approved the 20-lot subdivision under 40B, there's been no changes, it's still access off of Brook Lane. Nothing has changed. The infrastructure is the same. The only difference is that there are five less buildings on the property.
Okay.
Other than that, everything is the same. So we've been proceeding, not knowing what the board is going to decide. We're proceeding as if we're building a project for what you've previously approved. And if the board decides that they want to allow us to do the special permit, it's not going to affect the construction that we've already started. So.
But of course, in the 15 units, there's no affordable units for the town on that.
I think that's the biggest trade-off question is affordability, losing the affordability or building something that's more appreciated by the neighbors.
Okay. So it seems like as far as the board members feel, everybody's in favor of closing the hearing and then having deliberations as far as, you know, where you actually come down on, on the decision and a discussion for that. We do have, once we close it, we have time for a decision. Do you know what the time is on this?
14 days to.
Just by permeage.
14 days to file your decision.
Once we close or once we vote.
You have 90 days to close the public hearings and once you open it. But if you're going to close and deliberate, your timeframe is, I think, around 14 days. So, I mean, I wouldn't really, I'd be careful with continuing.
So I also think that we've been through this a lot. We know this, I probably know this site in my head better than most other places in Walpole at this point. You know, I think that we've, really what it's going to come down to is what do board members feel? Is, is this a special, you know, special permit? Because that's what the application is for. Not setting aside, because it's really not under our consideration, the lawsuit or the property ownership questions. Is this something that fits the character of the, of the neighborhood? I also, you know, I personally have concerns about the density, but I also know Redwood Mews is like almost, almost in a butter to this. And that is a.
Super dense.
That's a similar, actually, a similar density.
Actually, that's one unit every 3750 square feet, if you really want to get down to it. So that was under a different zoning time.
At the time.
Right. Well, we agree the board should close or there's nothing more that we can add. We'd appreciate, you know, your favorable support. If you don't, then I'll decide whether or not I should proceed with the 40B or file an appeal at that point. Depends on. Thank you.
Well, I guess my only other thought is whether Engineering's comment letter has a number of items that it's dated May 30th, so relatively recently. And it asks for some changes, I believe, to the plan. Replaces existing six-inch main in Brook Lane with eight-inch, those types of things. Whether we want, you know, or need plans updated to reflect these comments. You know, I guess we could get feedback on that. And whether we should, if we want that, then we would keep it open just for purposes of receiving those plans.
Mr. Petrosi, have you seen these comments from the town engineer? May 30th.
Yes, we've, we've had many conversations with the town engineer. In fact, I'm meeting with him tomorrow. We're also meeting with the sewer and water on the 10th, which is Monday. I mean, some of the stuff that he's asking for regarding the off-site improvements, we're, as I mentioned earlier, discussing to perform more cooperatively with, you know, on behalf of the town in exchange for a waiver of connection fees. So, yeah, they're, given the fact that, you know, this, we're still have to go in front of the planning board for site plan review. So some of these comments will be hammered out during that process as well. So I don't know that that's essential for the zoning board to have all those comments definitely resolved in a set of plans. But you're, you're a purveyor to do whatever you decide. But it didn't seem in our, it didn't seem to be anything that was earth-shattering in those comments that isn't easily resolved, except for the off-site improvements.
I guess on the last, in the recommendations section, he's talking about.
Handicap ramps.
Yeah, whether you're amenable, that you are amenable to discuss proposal recommendations for off-site improvements. And he lists, you know, the replacement of the six-inch main with the eight-inch. Are you, are you agreeable to all those or are you still in discussion?
We're discussing an offset with the sewer and water. So we're not in agreement that we're doing it for free. We're willing to do it as a private, as a private developer with some consideration on the, on the other side. And then he's asking us, he's recommending that we, that we improve the handicap ramps that the town just did put in. And they didn't put them in according to the requirements. So he's asking us to redo them. So call it what it is. They just put a sidewalk down Union Street and didn't put handicap ramps in, so.
I guess it's just difficult for us to either include these as conditions or not, depending on, you know, where Engineering comes out on them.
Yeah. Well, again, you know, the board can vote however they want. We're only interested in getting the special permit, so.
Right. Whether that should include a requirement to replace the six-inch main or reflect whatever agreement you have.
Yeah.
I think is how we craft a condition that addresses these recommendations is kind of an open question.
I think, I think those, the sewer board will probably send another letter. I mean, we, we have an agreement in concept, but it hasn't been put to writing yet.
Also, to your point, an eight-inch main is something that clearly benefits the proposed development. It's not as if it needs.
We have an eight-inch main in our development. Putting a six, changing a six-inch to an eight-inch is not going to benefit us. We still have the same benefit with our eight-inch.
No, not if you have a six-inch delivering it. So you have an eight-inch main.
According to our information, it doesn't make a difference. But hey, the biggest problem with that, to be honest with you, the biggest problem with replacing that is there's an AC concrete pipe, which is asbestos. So there are, it's problematic for disposal if the pipe is damaged in any way. And typically, you are required, you know, there are, there are parameters that you need to agree to that the pipe gets left in place and it's not disturbed. Because if it is disturbed, then you have environmental issues that you have to deal with for disposal, and that's extremely expensive. So us as developers, we're not willing to take on that responsibility. So like I said, we're in the discussion stages with the sewer and water. The town engineer will likely be part of that process. So if the board decides that they want to put it in, and you put it in, and if we are happy with the results of the rest of the decision, maybe it stays and maybe we appeal. I don't, you know, I don't know.
One of the things, as I look at these, these all benefit the projects even though they're off-site mitigation. I think we could, if we were, if we were inclined to approve it, those would be conditions of approval because they're being requested by the town engineer.
I guess I'm just trying to avoid an appeal if we don't need, you know, if there was an agreement on these.
I just, I just want what's fair.
No, right. I mean. I need to know from the engine, our department, what's fair. I can't, I'm not sitting here.
I can just, you know, that's probably about, you know, doing the work on Union Street to tie in is probably a $20,000, $30,000 expense. Running the water line in and excavation, 250 feet. You know, you're talking another $100 or $150 a linear foot. So, you know, it's not a cheap proposition. And if you throw in the environmental issues potential, if the town wants to indemnify us for disposing of any material that is hit or, you know, that needs environmental remediation, it's a different story. But you can't, and we're not going to be riding this boat, riding this horse by ourselves, you know? That's why we're having a conversation for reciprocal treatment, let's say, of sewer and water connection fees, which are roughly $6,000 per unit. So let's, you know, if you're going to close, that's fine. We're going to have our conversation with the, with the sewer and water on Monday night. And we're going to have a hearing with the planning board on the 20th. And those things have a way of working themselves out.
Or we can keep it open and, and.
I'd rather, I'd rather close it.
Get these addition.
Yeah, I'd rather close it because.
Get them resolved.
We're, we're interested in, in the vote. The special permit is our primary issue. The rest of the stuff is things that were related to other conditions that we're, we know about as a result of the comprehensive permit. And we're in compliance with those things. So, you know, there's nothing that's going to change in front of the zoning board. In other words, that's going to not be available by the time you deliberate or vote.
I was going to ask if we could carry some of the conditions from the 40B.
The 40B project, that's what I was just looking up, actually.
Because then if he's already dealing with it for that, just move it over.
Yep, one second. What was?
I asked Patrick if we could just carry the conditions from the 40B approval.
The 40B permit is 40 pages long, so.
Yeah, but the conditions were obviously, you said the site's very similar as far as what you'll need.
So I guess there's a motion still on the, to close the hearing.
Yeah. Who made the motion? To close?
I believe there was a motion made.
Yeah, you jump on the gun. Don't like that.
In terms of the timeframe to close the hearing, since the application, do, are we in good shape if we decide to continue?
There we are, yeah.
We have 90 days from April 22nd.
April 22nd, from April 22nd? Yeah.
I was, I was ready, I was feeling we were ready to close the hearing, but I think the comments from the town engineer really need to, those need to be addressed. If he gives us the comments, they should be, they should be addressed. Patrick, what's your thought?
So the comments from the town engineer, so obviously it seems to be response from the applicant's engineer that they're, they're amenable, amenable to a discussion of those items. So is the board looking for clarity that those are definite? That the applicant is going to incorporate into their plan? Or I guess, you know, your criteria, what you're looking at is fairly limited. But at the same time, I understand there's certain discrepancies of if you're going to grant that relief, what are that, some of the impacts to those potential homes as well as the existing homes on Brook Lane?
It totally ties in.
Yeah.
So in my notes, I have, you know, these, these four items from the town engineer, those could just be incorporated into a special permit as, as conditions. That's, that's what needs to, that's what needs to happen. And I think it makes it, you know, it makes it a better project for everybody. Because we don't want to have a situation where Brook Lane is not, not restored, you know, it's going to be beat up during construction. So at the end, it's, you know, repaved.
So if we're at that point, what, I mean, does it take, do we have to?
Incorporate them.
At the special permit subject to conditions, I mean, it doesn't seem like a big hurdle here to proceed if those are the conditions, if you're going to stay with those conditions. What's left to be?
So that's, if, if what the applicant's saying is if you were to incorporate those recommendations as part of the conditions, is that?
Is that where you're at? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I, you, there's really no choice other than to do that, I think. But I don't think it makes sense. I mean, you seem to indicate that if we put these conditions in, you have your further discussions. It turns out that your agreement with Engineering is to not replace the six-inch main with the eight-inch. So then you're going to appeal the special permit. It's going to cost litigation. We could avoid all of that if there's a discussion with Engineering to resolve those now and not, you know, roll the dice and hope that you're not going to appeal, you know, the cost of town.
I think every developer makes a decision depending on the conditions that are in with, and as.
Right.
So I can't, I don't have a crystal ball as to what we do. But obviously, we're looking for a supportive vote on the special permit. And, you know, we've always, as developers, we're always doing things for the towns and various communities, as you would say, John, to help ourselves.
Applicant can always modify.
Yeah, that's not something I say. That's not something I have said. Okay. You know what?
You know, I was going to say, for some reason, something, one of these conditions is not, you know, through further discussion, it's really not workable. And the applicant can always modify the special permit.
Right.
So that's, that's another element as well, rather than appeal, modify.
Modify a special permit?
Well, I mean, so you, we're looking at, was it items 40 through 43?
Right.
On the recommendation page? So if you incorporate that within your conditions, it goes to site plan through, through the planning board. And then throughout that process, one of them is really, you know, discussed between the applicant and town engineer, realize it's not needed. Any of the applicant would just need to modify his special permit with the zoning board. And then at that point, you have confirmation from the town engineer as well.
That solves that. I'd feel comfortable with that. Okay. So first thing we need to do is, we all agreed it's time to close this hearing. So, and that's also, and I know, Mr. Conroy, you've got the civil case out there. That's separate, that's not going to interfere with us closing the hearing. That's. to interfere with us closing the hearing. That's, that's the case out there. Okay. Does somebody want to make the motion to close, close the hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Mark. Somebody want to second that?
Second.
Second by Drew. Any further discussion on this? So we've talked about, you know, special conditions, so that would involve approving it. Do people feel that this is a special permit that should be approved because it meets the requirements of the bylaw, that it is, you know, not detrimental to the neighborhood? And Bob, you've talked about this, which, where, what's your thoughts at this point?
Yeah, I think with the, I think, I think I'd be comfortable approving the special permit with the conditions that have been laid out by the town engineer as requirements. But I'd like in the decision of sort of a fulsome discussion of how we got here, including, you know, reference to the fact that, and we'll need some guidance, I think, on the drafting of this from town council as to, you know, what they appropriate, as I mentioned before, whether we should be comparing this to what's already been approved versus, you know, just what's existing now, which is nothing. Or whether, you know, whether we should just be looking solely at the special permit. But even if it's solely with respect to the special permit, you know, based on the testimony of the abutters, based on the, the density of the project fitting within the parameters provided by the bylaw, and the conditions that would be imposed through the engineering department's recommendations. I think with respect to the zoning board, I'd, I'd be comfortable, under those circumstances, to grant the special permit.
Okay. Mark, what's your thought?
Yeah, I mean, I don't love the loss of the affordable housing. I think that's certainly something that's badly needed. But I think in this case, I'd be willing to trade that for a better project. And, you know, certainly putting myself in the shoes of the residents on Brook Lane and all the massive disruption that they're going to be seeing and are already starting to see. I think this is a, you know, a small silver lining for them, that they will get a better project that's less disruptive to their, their, their street. And I think I'd be willing to, to trade that.
I think it's interesting you mentioned the affordable housing because there would have been five affordable units under the 40B plan. And interestingly, now there's five less units. And that's, you know, there goes, there goes five affordable units that we spent a lot of time on, talking about when it was a 40B application. Tim, where are you coming on this?
I think it's a better project than the 40B one, for sure. The density seems a little dense, but to, a couple of points made today, there's a lot of density in that area of East Walpole right now. So I don't think it's hugely dense compared to some of the other areas. So I'd be, I'd be okay.
Drew, how about you?
I think the project is certainly better than what was previously proposed, even though we lose the five affordable units. I think that hearing from the abutters, that they would be, some abutters would rather be in favor of this proposed project. I would be in favor of the special permit with conditions outlined by the town engineer. And I still think that kind of a quick discussion about the previous application and how it is ruled upon by us, I would agree to Bob's point, making sure that we have some clarity on the decision and how we rule on it so that it's agreed upon by all parties. And I think there was a couple of changes about the drawings too, as far as the, one of the abutters had mentioned having something removed. I'd like to see, I know it's been a contentious, talked about area. I'd feel better seeing some sort of resolution, even on the drawing set that we may or may not close the hearing on.
Mr. Chair, one, I mean, I do think there were other conditions in the 40B decision that I think we need to make sure make it here so they're not lost. And I think we worked pretty hard on those. I'd have to go back and look through them all. And, I mean, maybe some are not applicable, but I think a lot are. And I just want to make sure that we maintain the good parts of that, that project.
Okay. So, to do that, we really need to sit with the, the decision and say, we like this, keep this, let this go, go through it. So that's not going to-
I do caution that. I mean, your criteria is far different than what it was as a 40B project. You know, that was all encompassing. This is really looking at through a different lens. I think you've highlighted some of the concerns within Carl's recommendations that you, that are imperative for the project. But, you know, we're talking about a 45-page document with conditions that deal with more, something under site plan review or under conservation. So those are only to be covered elsewhere, where the board's jurisdiction is right now.
Patrick, Patrick is correct. And, and because under 40B, we, we were sitting for the other, the other top boards with all that.
Fair point. I guess more, I'm thinking of the cosmetic stuff, the buffers and vegetation and plantings and stuff like that, that could fall off of this if not covered by somebody. But I take, I agree.
So, again, that, that would be covered under site plan approval.
Yep.
But we're just looking at the, the special permit. And I think, I think it's appropriate that we, we stay in, in our lane on that. Okay. So, so do board members want to, to close the, close the hearing? Yes. Mr. Petrosi, do you want to close the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Close. So at the request of the applicant, does somebody want to make a motion to close the hearing?
We just need to vote on the motion.
Just need to vote on the, you are, sorry.
A long day. So we have, we're going to vote on closing the hearing. So all those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. So, the hearing is closed. We've discussed, you know, back and forth, looking at it. And I agree with Bob. For any decision, we need to have it in writing about, are we comparing this to the 40B, or are we comparing it to existing conditions? So, your thoughts on comparing it?
I mean, my concern about comparing it to the 40B is that it's sort of a, like, 40B, there are requirements against proposing a project under 40A and then coming back within a certain amount of time and proposing a 40B. That's sort of leverage over a town to say that, well, if you don't approve this, we're going to build that. And this is kind of the reverse. So they already have the rights under 40B. So, you know, it seems like a relevant fact, but I don't know if we can consider that as part of the neighborhood. I think we'd probably be on strongest footing if we, you know, justified approval based on the special permit criteria alone, sort of without, I think it's, it's important historically to establish precedent maybe for future decisions that, to describe how we got here, that this has been a six-year-long process. We went through multiple rounds of hearings on the 40B, ultimately was approved, discussions amongst the neighbors. Neighbors were happier with this proposal. And just so that we can distinguish this in the future from any other project that might come forward and say, well, you know, you approved this, you have to approve ours. You know, everything should be viewed on its own merits. But I think there's a lot of unique aspects to this, the history of this, that I think is worth putting in the, in the decision. So I think my preference would be to refer to the 40B, but not say that the 40B approval constitutes the neighborhood for purposes of our decision. I think we should base it solely on the, you know, harmony to the neighborhood criteria.
And I also look at it that we're almost negotiating against ourselves because this board approved the 40B, and now we have something that's, you know, before us. And I actually think that I, I would probably, even if the 40B was not a consideration, I would say this is not a, it's not great, but it's not terrible. It meets a lot of the zoning requi- it's meeting the setbacks, it's meeting the, the square footage necessary for the, the units. So take out the 40B that's hanging over the neighbors on this. I just, I think this is a, it's, it meets the outlines of the bylaw. So I would, I'd be in favor, I'd be in favor of it even not looking at the 40B case.
Yeah.
Anybody else? But I use that term about negotiating against ourselves because that's how I feel, that what we've already approved is now almost the, well, look what we could do.
Yep.
Drew, Tim, your thoughts? Okay. Okay. So, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the special permit with the four conditions listed from the town engineer? Those are 40, 41, 42, and 43 on this. And with the, you know, with the discussions that we've had, and also that would be part of, part of the decision as Bob outlined. Does somebody want to make a motion to that effect, or add anything else?
Just one addition. I think, memory might be cloudy on this, but I think we may have discussed it prior hearings on this. Discussion about traffic-related improvements that were part of the 40B. And I believe there was agreement that those would continue in this. So I would just like to include as conditions, anything in the hearing that you agreed to, so that those can be captured in the decision as well.
Yeah, I can, I can find language that, so basically incorporating traffic improvements that were-
Yeah, I don't know that that's, I don't recall if that's the only issue, but I recall that one specifically. So there might be others, but-
Yeah, it's, absolutely.
Only those that were consented to, and not, you know, going to put anything else in there.
Anything else? So traffic, the town engineer's conditions?
What kind of asphalt?
Oh. No, it's not impervious.
It is impervious.
It's not pervious, right. It's, it's regular asphalt. Okay. Okay. Motion's before us. So the town engineer, I'm just looking at, okay. Number three, Patrick.
You talking about conditions 40 through 43?
This is, Patrick, this is your memo.
Oh.
The final plan of record approved by the planning board shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals and retained within the case record.
Okay. So that, good catch, John. Sorry, I completely forgot the, so that is a condition we've had in unsimilar situations where an applicant has had to come to the zoning board for a special permit, usually to do with the use, and then has also subsequently gone to planning board for site plan review. So rather than this back and forth, if there's a non-substantive change, really the plan of record should be submitted back to the zoning board, rather than having the applicant come just to change the plan. Good example.
As long as it's non-substantive.
Exactly.
Okay.
And we also have the condition that the applicant agreed to regarding modification of the labeling of the rectangular piece on the, on the plan.
Yep, I got that one. Yep.
Okay. Anything else to add? Okay. All those in favor of approve, what?
There you go, John.
What?
Make it and second it.
Oh. Somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
By Drew.
Second.
Second by Mark. Okay. And voting on this will be the five, five members. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Next case is case number 2025, Walsh Brothers Building for 300 Stone Street Special Permit under Section 11 of the zoning bylaws to allow construction of a single-family dwelling in an area designated as a floodplain district. And this was continued from May 1st. Welcome back, Judy.
Thank you, John. Nice to be seen.
Okay. Good evening. Sorry for the long wait. It's been a busy night for everybody.
It's quite all right, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Brian Almeida for the applicant, along with Rob Truax of GLM Engineering. Please forgive my voice, I'm taking a beating from the pollen. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are before you after a remand, after a judgment of the land court. We're seeking a special permit under Section 11 3B of the Flood Plan Protection Overlay District. In the previous proceedings before the board, the board did find that the special permit criteria was met as to items 1, 2, and 3 of the special permit criteria under the Flood Plan Protection Overlay District. And Mr. Truax is more than happy to present the plan and also address item number four of the special permit criteria.
Okay. So one of the things, the, you're asking for relief under Section 11. Section 11 is rather lengthy, three pages. Is there a specific section under Section 11 that you're looking for relief under?
11 3B. Page 84 of the bylaws.
Okay. Very good. And do you want to explain what's being proposed?
Good evening, everyone. Rob Truax from GLM Engineering Consultants. Give an overview. It's been a long time since you've probably seen this plan, so I'll go through it all over again. So on the board here, we have, the site is what we call 300 Stone Street, which is Lot 2. The existing conditions are shown on the left-hand side of the page, and the proposed ones are shown over here on the right-hand side. And if you look at the site, this is Stone Street. Clark barn is across the street. There's a- There's a 236-inch culvert that, and a controlled structure that discharged from Clark Pond down into a perennial stream. The stream travels down along the, I guess that's the southerly side of the site, and then around the rear of the site, and off towards, which eventually heads down towards the center of town. The light green area that you see is area that's contained within the 100-year flood zone. That's an area that flooded during a 100-year storm. The dark green is what's called Zone X, which is elevated high enough that it would not be flooded under 100-year storm conditions. So if you look at the existing site, if this were to flood, the water would come across the street and it would dissipate around these little islands and head down to the rear of the site. So what we're proposing is, we're proposing a single-family house that sits in the middle of the site, which kind of sits between the two areas. We're filling in this zone in the middle, this flood zone. We're doing grading on the site to compensate for that area that's lost for flooding. We have some grading up in the front yard. We have the swale of the building, and we have some grading around the back. It's a walkout basement. The basement level is higher than the 100-year flood. The, which puts the first floor and obviously the second floor above that as well. So the house itself is above the flood, flood area. The, the existing site currently has a spillway that comes in off of Stone Street. There's no catch basins in this area here, and the street runoff comes into this low area of the street and it's kind of paved there. During the review process, which we've got an order of conditions for the project, as you may, as you may recall. And during that process, we've met with the town engineer, we went through the process with the conservation commission. And so we are providing some additional treatment for this area of discharge onto the site, even though it's coming from Stone Street and it's not a part of the project itself. So we do have a swale. We're gonna have some riprap at the end, and we have a grass swale that goes down, and we're gonna have a little settling basin prior to a discharging towards the stream to provide some pre-treatment of the surface runoff from the road. So that was something that was requested of us by the conservation commission during the process, and we reviewed it with the town engineer. So that's how that kind of came about. So at the end of the day, when the site's constructed, the home, the driveway, and the area around the home will be elevated outside the 100-year flood so that the house itself won't flood. If there was such a storm, the area around it, the water will be able to pass by. If it was to come over Stone Street, it would dissipate around the house both sides. As it is now, it comes down through the site in the middle a little bit, but then primarily it goes over this gravel parking lot to the north side. This is the old commercial building that's here now, but that's also in the flood zone. And then it comes down through the river area, the perennial stream, and around the site and heads towards the center of town. The, the part that may be a little confusing on the site, if you look at it, is this is a sloping site, which is sloping from the street down to the rear. So it's not, it's not, if you look at the flood zone maps, you're not getting like a pond. You say, okay, this pond floods to this level all the way around. What's happening is the site's sloping, so if there is a 100-year flood, the flood elevation is going with the contour of the land. So it's actually, is, if you see these lines I put on here, so when you go to the flood study, which is what we use to get the elevations, the elevations are dropping. The actual 100-year flood is dropping as it goes across the site to the rear of the site. So off of the street, you have a flood elevation that starts at 176, and then when you get back to here, it's at 172. So it's dropped. That flooding is following the contour of the land. I don't know if you can kind of picture that. It's not like a, like a pond that fills up flat all the way across. So the site's sloping, and so it would really just be water traveling across the site.
And that's all accounted for in the dark versus light green shading?
The light green is the area where it would travel in today's world if we didn't do anything.
But this, the fact that it's sloped, that's, that's considered as part, so the green is still, or the dark green, I should say, is still within the 100-year flood.
So I think, that's kind of an overview of where we were. I don't, I think, I don't know if all of you sat on this the last time. I'm not sure. Some of you members might not have. I can't recall who was here, who wasn't. Questions?
So one of the things, a peer review was done of this.
Correct.
And that was done by GZA, and GZA had some concerns about the method of calculations that were being used. Do you want to address those?
Well, that's partially true. GZA also said that the calculations we provided for flood compensation were accurate.
That is, that is true, and.
That we met that criteria.
But then they talked about that that's really not the correct method of looking at it.
Yeah, I, that is the method that we look at to meet the criteria of the bylaw.
And, but GZA went further on that and said that they, they had concerns.
And that's why we're here today.
It's, Ms. Chair, enough it might be helpful just to kind of give, I think, before we get ahead of ourselves, just a brief explanation, because we do have some members that weren't here. I wasn't here when first, when this first came forward, but did provide just a brief memo, just explaining a little bit of the case history of where this came from. I know Mr. Gerald, Mr. Lee, I think Mr. Delaney was for part of it. You know, it started back in May of 2020 when application came forward, was originally denied, two, two in favor, three opposed. Some of the reason for denial was more or less concerned about the adverse impact and safety of the surrounding area, but it ended up being appealed by the applicant, kind of going back to where those, you know, those conditions of 11, 3B are kind of the primary factor for which the board has to render their decision. So that was ultimately remanded back to the board in '21. This was, I was saying, March. It was open in May of '21. Through that process of a remand, it was agreed upon by the applicant and the town that the board would have the ability to procure a peer review, outside peer review. Applicant agreed to that. Case was open. We sought, we sought comments, or rather, rather, we sought, we sought peer review and essentially came down to a decision where the board picked GZA in environmental engineering in Norwood. And throughout that process, GZA was able to conduct a site visit, review our special permit criteria, as well as conduct their own analysis, which was the basis for the board's second denial, which was in July of '21. As that case went back to land court, I believe, it was further looked upon, both site visit as well as through litigation between the applicant side and town council. There should be a copy. I know we submitted, I know this is, I think this is the second meeting we've had on this now. We've remanded, we've continued twice, but there should be a copy of the judgment and decision that was given by land court, where essentially land court has remanded back to the board. Specifically that the board's decision criteria remain confined to what is 11, 3B. And I think that is, it's kind of where we're at, where we're at today, I think, except before, previously, two previous denials from the board. For all, you know, well, well-intended, land court determined that those were outside the bounds of criteria for which the board should have issued a decision previously.
Yeah, as I recall, we, there was discussion about applying the section two standard conditions that apply to all special, or what we thought applied to all special permits. And it sounds like the court said, no, in this case, when it's a floodplain overlay district special permit, it's, you don't look at section two, you only look at section 11.
Yep.
We have the letter from GZA.
We do have it on the case record. I didn't print, we didn't print it out for this specific case. It was, yeah, it was very long. It was like, what, thirty, twenty pages? Yeah, so we didn't print it out. It's on the case.
I think that's, particularly where that was, the peer review that was provided. I want to see that. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
So you mentioned you have an order of conditions, and that's for this specific plan?
Correct.
And so the net flood storage that you're providing is either the same as or better than previous?
I think it's, we're providing more flood compensation. It went from flood loss of 276 cubic feet, and we're providing 875 cubic feet of extra storage on the site.
Thanks.
In your diagram, are the colors reversed on the, what? What?
These colors don't reflect what I was talking about here. Yes, you're correct.
Okay, so the colors are reversed.
These are the colors in general of where the grass and where the tree line would be. These are colors in reference to the flood. Sorry. I probably should use other colors.
I can figure it out, so.
I apologize.
As I, as we look at that, is, under this plan, is the channel being relocated, or is it?
The channel for the street runoff?
For the stream runoff.
Right now, there is no channel. It just disperses on the site in several different directions. It lands here, some of it goes this way, some of it goes this way.
There's a spillway.
The spillway just push, just ends right here. It's just a paved spillway, like a trough coming off the road, and it just dumps onto the site. There's no riprap. There's no, there's no controlled channel. There's no treatment.
But it's, it's channelized as it goes.
It really does. There's no channel through the woods. It doesn't, you can't, if you walked out there, you wouldn't even know it was going there unless you walked up to it and saw it. There's no distinct channel, defined ditch or anything going through the woods. It's just flowing in this direction, this direction. It just floods through the area, just flows through the area, just disperses. We're gonna define a channel.
Okay. And to the diagram on the right, it looks like the floodplain is being shifted to, over to the, the right. Is that?
We're providing some, we're providing, when you say over to the right. The floodplain is, we're basically filling around the house, taking out of the floodplain and raising the house up.
Right.
And then we're digging out and providing compensation around that area. It's not, it's not a lot of loss in flood storage on the site. It's only 276 cubic feet. It's a very small amount, and it really happens right in here. So it's a very minimal amount of flood loss under the calculation, and then we're providing almost three times as much storage, or three, yeah, we are doing, it's over three times that compensation on the site.
Just to make sure that I'm reading this correctly, so on the right-hand side, you have the flood elevations listed on the right, says, where it says flood elevation 175. And if I follow that line to the left, it looks like, if I'm not mistaken, the, the dark line that says 175, that is the improved condition? The dark, right?
You're looking at this side, the proposed, correct?
Yeah, looking, so, yeah, on the proposed side. So there's, there's a flood elevation. So are you saying that there's essentially, you know, a half a foot or less of, from that walkway to where the floodwater would be at the 100-year storm? It's.
Correct.
Half a foot.
And this is, and then it drops to 174.5.
Right, and the.
Yeah, it just keeps dropping as you go down the stream. So the backyard, the flood elevation behind the house is 173.5. And then up here by the street, it's 176, but it's changing incrementally as you go across the site.
Right, right. I'm just trying to get a sense for, if I'm standing at the 173.5 in the backyard, and there's a 100-year flood, basically.
The water's gonna be flowing around the house.
Right about, right around.
Gonna be coming around.
The side of the house, yeah.
Both sides.
And the erosion control barrier, is that just a construction?
That's just for construction, to protect, there's, there's wetlands associated with that stream, so there is a BBW. That's the limit of work. That's the protection. This is the actual, this is the actual BBW line right out here, that goes right along the edge of the stream. So this was, you know, like I said, it went through conservation. It was part of BBW. We had riverfront area. We had floodplain to deal with. They had to review all of that. They had to review the same thing you are reviewing right now for flood compensation. I mean, that comes under the Wetlands Protection Act, so they have to look at all of that flooding, flood loss.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I guess I have to take a little exception to the statement that you made, Mr. Truax, that you can't tell where the stream goes.
Where the what?
Where the stream travels through the property. You said the water just washes across and goes from 176 to 172 at the rear of the lot.
Correct.
Okay, you did, you've never seen a stream there?
I think, I think we're, I think you're, I think you're misunderstanding what I'm talking, he was talking about the drainage that comes in off the street.
No, I'm not.
No, no, I'm talking.
I'm talking about the spill, the spillway that's carrying the, the water from Clark's Pond.
Oh, you're talking about the control structure. I wouldn't call that a spillway. I was, this is what I was calling the spillway, where the water comes off the street.
Okay, so I, I think, excuse me.
No, no, you're, you're absolutely right.
I'm gonna continue my questions, Mr. Truax.
No, there's a river that goes around the site from there. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, okay, so we're, we're clear on that, okay? So I, I have some video here from May 11th, when I went up to my knees beside the river, quote, perennial stream, to the back of the property, to the, the back of the existing conditions. I wouldn't exactly call it, you know, a creek.
Yeah, we had some flooding this year, absolutely.
All right, okay. And I know that, and that wasn't a 100-year.
I may have misunderstood your question. The spillway you were talking about was from the pond.
Correct.
Okay, so yes, that travels around the site. This is the blue. That is a defined river. It's a perennial stream.
Where is that on the existing condition?
Just right here, going around this way.
And so that doesn't, that location doesn't change?
Correct. No, no, that doesn't change. We wouldn't be allowed to change that.
Right, well, that's why I asked.
All right, all right. So I thought, when you said spillway, I was thinking of this paved area. It takes the runoff from Stone Street. I apologize. I think I misunderstood you.
Yep.
Okay, can I continue?
Yes.
Okay. So under section B, in the first paragraph, it, it speaks to no earth being dumped, filled, excavated, or transferred unless a special permit is granted.
That's under the section three?
That's section B. It's the heading of section B. B, yeah, then B.
Eleven B.
Four. Am I correct? Are you looking at this one, Drew?
Yep, eleven B, that's what you said. Yep, that's the only one we're looking at.
That's what we're looking at, okay. So do you have calculations as to the amount of earth disturbance going, being performed, taken out, and then dumped back in?
I do not.
Okay.
The only thing we've, under this section, the only thing we were trying to apply was the flood compensation. I'm not sure.
Okay, well, I mean, dumping and digging, and I have a concern with the water, first of all. Okay, we can go back to that, because you don't have those numbers. And under B four, that it's, the area needs to be designed to prevent contamination of floodwaters by chemicals, waste, or other pollutants.
Correct.
Where are those?
We don't have any chemicals stored on the site. We don't have any pollutants. We're actually providing treatment for the town runoff, improving the situation.
But you are proposing a dwelling.
Yeah, but the dwelling has a roof which collects runoff, which is clean water.
Okay. And then what other, as far as the section five, what conditions will protect the health and safety of the public and by, and the occupants of the proposed home? And what I mean by that is for the protection of what's going to be downstream. Downstream from Clark's Pond is Diamond Pond. Downstream from Diamond Pond is Memorial. what's going to be downstream. Downstream from Clark's Pond is Diamond Pond. Downstream from Diamond Pond is Memorial, Memorial Pond. What, what are the protections being provided downstream?
So I'm, I'm happy to address that, Ms. Conroy. In the land court's judgment, the court determined that Section 5 isn't an independent requirement that the applicant needs to meet, merely that in the special permitting process, the board may impose conditions. I want to make that, just particularly because I, I know that we're not one of the members who was on this the first time, but that is a component of the land court's decision, remanding this back to the board. And with respect to the, your question about the heading of Section B, the court was again quite clear that the board's analysis was confined to numbers one through four. And none of those requirements require us to have any calculations about fill or excavation or anything of the like.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, so you can just bypass the, the philosophy of the section, which says you can't dump earth, fill, excavate, or transfer?
The land court said, because it's an overlay district, where it's a use allowed as a matter of right in a residential district, that the board's analysis was confined to Sections 1 through 4, and 1 through 4 alone.
So, Ms. Conroy, I can kind of speak to where you're asking. So when it goes over 11B, so we're reading that no structure or building shall be erected, constructed, substantially improved, or otherwise created or moved, no earth or other materials dumped, filled, excavated, or transferred unless a special permit, which is why their hair is granted by the Board of Appeals. Said board may issue a special permit hereunder, subject to the applicable provisions of this bylaw and conformity with the following provisions. So those, I had to ramble. Those are 1 through 5. When you're going over about the fill or excavating, that's part of constructing of a residential dwelling, that, I guess I'm going back to 5D of our zoning bylaws, when it talks about the filling or removing of earth. It's an incidental use to the construction of a home.
Oh, I understand that quite, quite well.
Yeah.
But my concern is, we, we've had some excavation projects before us that we've kind of got hosed by because no one's watching what's taking place. Because we're the granting authority, and there's no town official assigned to, I don't mean to say that they're going to take out, you know, 400,000 cubic yards over there, but there's, there's no town official that takes on the responsibility of what happens on that site.
Well, I mean, to that, I would argue that, you know, anything that has to go through permitting would go through inspectional services. So when it comes to the type of fill and gravel being removed, that would have to kind of be factored in when they're applying for building.
There's no gravel being removed.
No, I understand there's no gravel removal, but it's a, to me, it's a land disturbance. I don't care if it's a wheelbarrow. You're, you're in, you're out, I mean, but...
That comes under conservation.
Conservation, thank you.
We already have that permit.
Okay, thank you.
I, I need more time on this. I, I need to particularly look at the GZA report. I also think, you know, we've, we've been shown the case tonight.
Thank you. The decision's important to look at from the court as well.
What's that?
I think we, the decision from the court is pretty well-spoken.
Yeah, no, I, I, when it came out, I, I went through it, and I, I agree with you. I, I would go through that again closely, but...
They do make reference to the GZA letter through that, and there's some errors in his report.
But what it comes down, what it comes down to is that with a special permit, we have to look at, you know, protecting, it even says, you know, people in the future that are going to live at this. The final part is, the board may, well, that's, that's number five, which I had read, where it talks about health, safety, and welfare of the public and occupants of the proposed use. And just inherently, building in a floodplain raises concerns, and I want to make sure that if approved, this is done correctly.
So, I can be heard on that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Again, I think that the land court's decision is quite clear that, I think the crux of that decision, particularly the, the last couple pages, speak to the fact that the land court determined that Section 5 is not an independent criteria that the board can use to deny the permit.
Not, not independent, but it can be part of the consideration. It can't be independent.
No, I think, again, I think the land court determined that the consideration is with respect to criteria 1 through 4. If the board wants to specify conditions under Section 5, it certainly may, but not that the board can deny based on its belief that the principle of the subsection or of Section 5 dictate denial. That's, that's the crux of the land court decision. And with respect to the, the GZA report, none of their analysis bears on Sections 1 through 4.
So, not to, not to go back to, you know, the previous cases, Mr. Chair, so when they came back again for a remand, it was again submitted to departments for comment, as, as it would be with, with any other application. We have no real new comments other than what was previously submitted back in, in 2020 and 2021. So we have the most, unfortunately, the most up-to-date letter we have from, from engineering revolves around 2020, which is four years ago now. So obviously, if the board finds out, we need to kind of confirm again with, you know, Carl Waldorf, we certainly can. However, I'm just going to read through what was, you know, the following comments that he had back to the plan, which is, I think it's December 17th, 2019, which feels like forever ago. Some of the comments from, from town engineer. The proposed design appears to meet the requirements outlined in zoning by, zoning by law floodplain over, protection overlay district, Section 11, 3B, 1 through 5. The foundation drain shall be required. The drain shall be, uh, no, sorry. Number two. A foundation drain shall be required. The drain should discharge to daylight somewhere near the end of the proposed grass swale. Comment 3. Attached to this memorandum are ties to, to be installed, sorry, sorry. Attached to this memorandum are ties to install sewer and water services for the lot. The service stubs should be accurately shown on the plan. The sewer stub appears to be very close to the front left, northernly left corner. This may need to be reinstalled from the bank of the walkway to keep it on the lot. Comment 4. Driveway detail should be included, providing grounding, roundings going to the site. The apron shall be graded to the, to the street to keep gutter watered in the roadway. DPW should consider terminating the sidewalks on the driveway as the remaining sidewalk appears to be on the lot. I mean, I wanted to go over, but basically, I guess, that's the most recent comment we have to, like, to make a, I guess, any sort of conditions on.
And those are comments from the town engineer?
Town engineer.
From 2020?
2020. The plan hasn't changed since then, and so if you, certainly go back to Carl and try to reemphasize and make sure that those comments are still valid, but that's, that's the information that the board has to go on for this.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I mean, I would be in favor of allowing, you know, engineering to, to review their comments and also to give you the courtesy of the time that you feel you need to read the prior documents and the decisions just so we're all on firm ground. We've obviously been appealed once on this, so we want to make sure we got it, get it right.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant tonight? Okay. So what's the next night we could have continued this to?
June 17.
Oh, is there, oh, sorry, Mr. O'Leary. I am very sorry. Are there any public comments on this?
John O'Leary, Washington Street Walpole. Do you, Mr. Chair, just a clarification, I guess. From what Mr. Truax said, they're building up the area where the house is going to be placed?
Correct.
Is that earth coming from the site, then? Are you just relocating it, or are you actually bringing in earth from outside? Okay, so excavation requires a special permit if you're adding, if you're filling 150, what's it, 100 cubic yards? Requires a special permit.
Is this going to be over 100 cubic yards?
It's a residential.
The other question, doesn't really show it on these maps. This lot, just next to it, owned by the same people. Limited manufacturing. Requires a buffer. There is no buffer right now. Right now, the buffer is this lot. There's, there's another house over here. And the only reason I think that nothing was done is the common ownership. This was creating a buffer for that side. Now, there's no buffer for the new lot they're creating, the new house.
So, okay, so...
This is limited manufacturing over here, and there's a building like right here.
So first off, Mr. O'Leary, I, you know I always value your opinions and, and points. I hope you know that. Unfortunately, I think what we're looking at is just the special permit under Section 11.
That's my thought, and I think it's valid. Okay.
So, so, I mean, I already said I, I value your, so, I guess the question, we're not creating a, we're not creating a new lot.
No. But in the zoning bylaws, two adjacent lots owned by the same people can be treated as one lot. So there was no need to create a buffer when they separated it because it was owned by the same people. Now, if they're planning on selling that to separate ownership, there is reason that there's a buffer requirement in the bylaws between limited manufacturing and a residential property. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to address that question about the buffer? So... Am I going down a rabbit hole there?
No, I mean, I think this is another issue that, you know, upon the sale, if it's an issue, they'll need approval for it. If it's not an issue, they won't. I mean, it, it's not something that's before the board.
Yes, yes.
The other, I think the question was the...
They're not in common ownership.
Okay, well, again, that's not before us. That is what it is.
Yeah, they're two separate, they're two separate owners. They haven't been common ownership for a long time.
Okay, so, does anybody need any other information from the applicant on this? I've got to, got to get my head around this and make sure it's done correctly. This is the kind of thing that, as people drive through town, they see and they say, how'd that get approved? If it's good, it'll be good. If it's not, got to make sure we know that. When can we continue this, too?
On June 17.
June 17.
If we could ask the applicant for an extension of time until July 31st.
Do you want to give an extension of time until July 31st?
Is there a reason it's that, it's that long?
Just for bookkeeping, basically.
What was that?
I said, just for general bookkeeping. It, it, we have until July 2nd, but just for convenience purposes, just to have it to the end of the month.
I guess, I guess I'm not sure why I did the extension. I already go through July 2nd.
Well, does June 17th work?
Yes. Am I, am I correct to understand that's a Monday meeting?
Oh.
Yes, June 17th, yes.
June 17th on a Monday?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a Monday.
Okay, yes, the rest will be out.
In that case, it, it's fine. It's within the 90 days.
Okay. And if we need more time, we'll ask for more time at that point, but hopefully, hopefully we don't need more time. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
I just had one question. The 100-year storm seems like that's something that's constantly being reevaluated, given heavier rains and stuff like that. What was the, I, I'm assuming that was handled by conservation, but just for my own edification, what was, is that using the latest information about the quantity of water that, that you're expecting at a 100-year storm? Or is it dated a little bit?
Yes, it was the most recent ones, the last flood HUD study.
Is that like from the 80s, or is that...
Yeah, so you go to this, you go, you know, you have your flood maps, your FEMA maps, everybody uses for mortgages and whatnot. But then when you want to get a specific elevation, I mean, they do put elevations on there, but then you go to the actual study.
Yep.
Which you can get online, and then you'll, you'll see, if you go look at it, you'll see a profile of the river. And you'll see the elevation of the floodplain going down the river. That's how we get that.
Okay. And that roughly...
That's their study.
And the date of that is, do you know?
I don't have it roughed up in my head. I can figure, I can find out for you.
Those, thanks.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to continue this until June 17th, 7:00 PM here at Town Hall?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. We have, we've got one set of minutes, and Judy, you said you had some correction.
Yeah, I have, um, there's a correction that we need to make on the May 1st minutes that we already approved. I had recused myself from the case, and I was added in as voting. And I think that, being a Wall Street development case, I think that needs to be corrected tonight.
Thank you.
Correct that.
I don't know how you undo it, so I'll let you. You're the boss, John. You can figure it out.
Yeah, it's a Scribner's error, so just make that, make that change in the...
You have to vote it, or just fix it?
Correct.
Just fix it.
Motion to correct?
Just have it on the record.
Vote. What do you prefer?
Motion to correct.
Oh, in terms of...
On this case, I do motion to correct, please.
But I have a motion to correct the minutes of...
May 1st.
The 1st. So moved. Moved by Drew.
Second.
Second by Bob. Actually, actually, do you want to make, sorry, Drew shouldn't make that motion.
So moved.
Second.
No. You want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Bob.
Second and...
Second.
Second by Tim.
It's late.
Any further discussion on correcting that? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstained.
I don't think I was here for that.
Actually, you were. You were, yeah.
No, I was here for that meeting, but I don't think I was here for the minute approval, because that was last...
Kevin, you can do it.
Okay. How about the, the, the minutes from our last, last meeting? Of the 20th.
Looked very good to me. I don't have any comments.
The only thing I asked Lauren to do is when I recuse myself, if she could not just say I'm coming back, like, generally? If she could specifically say I returned for the case number...
In the, the next one, after the next one opens, I'll put that you came back.
Now, tonight, we had ins and outs, so exit stage left, okay. All right, that's the only correction for me.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes of May 20th?
So moved.
Second.
Second. By Bob. Any further discussion? And Mark, you weren't here for that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Mark abstained, so carried. Okay. Good. This was a long meeting. Thank you, everybody, but we are done by 10 o'clock. Okay, oh, it is after 10, sorry. Okay.
Close.
Thank you.
Want to do a adjourn?
Thank you, Patrick. Yeah, somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Good night, everybody.